All right, welcome, everyone, to the Monday, November 19th, 2018 Evanston City Council. You'll notice it'll be a little different tonight. We actually held executive session before this meeting, so we did roll call in the Aldermanic Library. Door was open for our roll call, and then we went right into executive session. So, thank you for being here. We're going to go right now into mayor announcements. I have a sad announcement and a more uplifting announcement, because about the holidays. So first, the sad announcement. You know, we have about 800 employees that work for the city. We had one of our city employees who literally was still on our city payroll and actively working, who passed away recently. And I just want to acknowledge this person. She's somebody that has helped lots of people up here at this dais and lots of other people, and that is Pandora Pratt. Pandora was the Police Records Bureau Chief. If you ever had to go get your fingerprints done over at the police department, oftentimes you were helped by Pandora. She died after a very short battle with cancer. She worked with the city since July 2002 in various capacities in our police department. She started as a service desk officer at the police front desk. In 2010, she became the assistant supervisor of the police front desk in the new 3-1-1 center that's now been around for eight years. So she was part of that, which has been really a real positive change that happened in the city, creating 3-1-1. She was instrumental in that. And in March 2015, she was promoted to be the Police Records Bureau Manager. A pretty important job to maintain all of the police records that we have and a lot of sensitivity. She survived by her husband and two sons. Her services will be held in Mississippi, but there will be a local memorial service planned for her later here. And flags on city facilities flew at half-staff through this past Sunday in honor of Pandora. So, a very sad loss for all of us here in the city. The second announcement that I have is more positive. We are entering our holiday season, so I wish everyone a wonderful Thanksgiving this week and the other holidays coming up in December. As part of the holiday season, there is lots of opportunity to be grateful for what you have and to support other people and to support our shop owners. We have the Mayor's Holiday Food Book and Toy Drive going on. We have boxes throughout the city. If you want to contribute to that, you can also look in the city's website and contribute a cash donation. So far, we've had close to $3,000 that's been donated to support that. As part of the holidays, one of the big things is, you know, shopping local. We have some wonderful, wonderful retailers here. And so I am proclaiming November 24th as Small Business Saturday in Evanston. And, real quick, we are the home, as many people know, to hundreds of small businesses that contribute to our neighborhood character, employee Evanston residents, support community organizations. Whereas, small businesses employ 47.5% of all private sector employees, whereas an estimated 68% of money spent shopping and dining at locally owned businesses stays here locally. Whereas, many public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, now therefore, I, Stephen Howard Hagerty, Mayor of the City of Evanston, do hereby proclaim this coming Saturday, September, November 24th, as Small Business Saturday in the City of Evanston, and call upon all residents to come out and support all of our small business owners. I have two of our folks that are instrumental in helping our small businesses here today. And if you wouldn't mind just coming to the podium for a second, sharing just a couple other important things that we want folks to know. We've got Annie Cokely, who is our Executive Director of Downtown Evanston, and Catherine Gostick, who is our Executive Director of the Main Dempster Mile, which has really come a long way since Catherine's...
Do you know the importance of shopping?
This is a video. This is a small business video that the City of Evanston put together.
Do you know the importance of shopping at local and independent businesses? It's a big deal. Evanston has several commercial districts featuring quaint and funky shops, top-notch restaurants and cafes, and exceptional galleries. Supporting businesses in all these districts makes Evanston, well, Evanston. For every $100 you spend at an independent business, $45 recirculates in the local economy versus $14 for purchases made at chain stores or online. In addition, local sales taxes support services in our city. Independent businesses give our community a distinct personality. Plus, their unique characteristics attract visitors to Evanston. Make sure you get it right the first time. When you shop at a local store, you can try on apparel and shoes, or test out a fragrance or product before you buy it. Independent businesses are people-sized, and take up less land, carry more locally-made products, and are located closer to residents, thus creating less traffic and air pollution. When you shop local, you'll meet new people, you'll have a story behind your purchases, and you'll be supporting the local merchants that help make Evanston the envy of surrounding communities. Be sure to shop local during the holiday season and all year round.
If that doesn't convince you to shop local, I don't know what is. There was a young man up here even bopping to the music there. I loved it.
Mine's on the actual PowerPoint. Good evening. I'm Annie Cokely, the Director of Downtown Evanston, and I'm just going to quickly go through some of the things we have planned for the holidays. Again, Small Business Saturday, the Saturday. You can advance. Sorry. Thank you. We will be set up at the One River School at 1033 Davis Street. We'll be handing out passports, and then after the passports are filled out, which means a shopper has spent $100, they redeem that passport for a free gift. You can... That's the passport. And that's the free gift. A Shop Small bag, an XOXO hugs and kisses coaster, and a We Love Evanston coffee mug, and a pound of Collectivo coffee, and a couple of other coupons. So, it's a great prize, or a free gift, I should say, a value add for anyone that's shopping local in downtown Evanston. After that, we have the Warm Babby Walk. This is our fourth one, December 6th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., and we are checking in at Isla's Originals on Sherman. And then, of course, the tree lighting. So, the Mayor will light the official permanent holiday tree this year. And 5:00 kicks off with Evanston Children's Choir. 5:30 is the actual tree lighting. And then immediately following, we have an ice covering demonstration. Santa will be at Pete Miller's, and Mrs. Claus will be at Becky and Me Toys, and Collectivo will be onsite with free coffee and hot cocoa.
Can you just stay on that slide for a second? Because I want to invite all of my colleagues up here to ride their bike with me to downtown when we light the tree, especially you, Alderman Wilson. Might be cold out there, but we're biking to the tree lighting.
Encouraging winter bike. Actually, Wheel and Sparkit will also be onsite to check bikes. These are just samples of some of our marketing materials. The one on the bottom is on 144 CTA rail cards, the red and blue line. That's it. And I'm going to turn it over to Catherine.
Thank you so much for having me, and we are so excited for the holidays. You can advance to the next slide. Our holiday lights are up, including those iconic candy cane lights on Main Street. Next one. They're good for something. And we also have a campaign on the CTA purple and red lines. This is it right there. Nine businesses are featured. It's our first one, so we're really excited about it. Next. We are also having a Small Business Saturday promotion. We're playing Monopoly on the Mile. Each of those little spaces there actually represents a business, so you can shop at any of those 39 businesses, fill in your space, and earn prizes when you shop. And we are holding our first holiday stroll. It's our Holiday Treat Walk. We have 30-plus businesses on December 13th. You can stroll along and get a free traditional holiday treat. Or some of them are planning some non-traditional ones, too. We're excited. That's what we have. Thank you, and I hope we'll see you all down on the Mile for the holidays.
Great. Thank you, Catherine. And City Manager, can you just...
Thank you.
Can you just remind everybody in the public, during the holidays, we alter our parking in Evanston, and I want to make sure everybody knows about that.
Yes, this year, we'll continue with free parking in the downtown garages, starting now, starting this past Saturday, and going to this coming Saturday, and going through the end of the first week in January. So, we encourage people to do that. We'll also have various changes to municipal services, which we'll cover at the next council meeting.
Terrific. Okay. Well, thank you, everybody. City Manager, do you have any announcements?
I do, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. As I know you all are aware, recently, the Evanston Fire Department received the ISO Class 1 status as a Class 1 Fire Department. We have waited until tonight to celebrate this, because we have a special guest with us, and I will let Fire Chief Brian Scott make those introductions.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, City Clerk Reed, City Manager Bob... Good evening, Fire Chief Brian Scott. I'm pleased to introduce to you this evening Office of the State Fire Marshal for the State of Illinois, Matt Perez. And along with Matt, I brought up Division Chief Paul Pollup, Shift Chief Bill Munro. I'd also like to call up Public Works Director Dave Stonebeck, if he could come up.
They're all there.
Oh, great. Thanks. Okay. And, as you know, back in August, we talked about this briefly, that October 1st, we were designated as a Class 1 Fire Department, which places the Evanston Fire Department in the top 007% of all fire departments in the United States. And it really demonstrates a great collaboration between us, the Water Department, and our Emergency Communication System, because it focuses on those key areas that altogether make sure that we deliver the best fire protection services for the City of Evanston. And it's such an important thing that the State Fire Marshal comes up from Springfield to make a special presentation. So with that, I'd like to introduce State Fire Marshal Perez.
Continuing with the theme of things to be thankful for, due to your support and the efforts of Evanston Fire Department and the Water Department, dispatch, it's a team effort to get this rating. There's only 17 fire departments in the State of Illinois that achieve this rating. That's out of about 1,200. So, that gives you an idea of how rare this is. And I really hope that you all appreciate what these guys do. They've got a great department. And again, it's due to your funding. It's due to your backing. And so to get to the top, to get to the level they're at, it's really hard. And it's there to be congratulated. And the other thing is, once you get to the top, the only thing that's harder is staying on top. Once you're a champ of something, it's hard to stay there. So, with all the financial issues that we're all dealing with, you know, revenues, all those kinds of things, it's really important that we keep backing these individuals for the efforts they have. They do an outstanding job, and I would encourage you all to continue the efforts you've made to support them in work they do for the people of Evanston. So again, thank you for your support. And in recognition of this achievement, I would like to present this plaque to Chief Scott, but also to you, like I said, because it recognizes your efforts to document that they did receive this ISO 1, which is an outstanding accomplishment.
Members of the City Council, again, thank you so much for your support, and we'll do our very best to keep the highest standards with the department and maintain the rating. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you to all our men and women in the Fire Department. City Manager, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. City Clerk, do you have any communications?
Yes, I have one communication. It's addressed to... it's a minute and 30 seconds. It's addressed to the Mayor and the members of the council. This is from Landmarks Illinois, the Cultural Landscape Foundation, the National Trust for Historic Preservation, Open Lands, Save Harley Clark, Lake Dance Design Evanston, Northern Illinois Historic League, Citizens Green Evanston, Evanston Lake House and Gardens, Central Street Neighbors Association, and the Preservation League. Dear Mayor Hagerty and members of the City Council, we are writing you respectfully requesting that you instruct staff to withdraw the city's demolition request for the Harley Clark Mansion. As you know, the November 6th citizens referendum resulted in 80.1% of voters favoring preservation of the landmark. This followed the Evanston Preservation Commission's October 23 unanimous vote to reject the city's demolition request as the city's application was found to not meet any of the required criteria needed for a certificate of appropriateness. City Council has been given a clear directive. Therefore, we think it appropriate that the demolition request for the Harley Clark Mansion be withdrawn at this time. We further suggest the City Council take immediate action to mothball the mansion until a reuse plan is agreed upon. In the meantime, local advocates, public officials, and organizations represented on this letter can regroup and present to the city within agreed-upon timeline a new proposal that allows the Harley Clark Mansion, with its gin-jensen design landscape, to function as a community asset for all Evanston citizens. We continue to believe that all Evanston residents should have equal access to this irreplaceable landmark at its spectacular lakefront setting, I'm sorry, and that we can all work collaboratively to find an equitable solution. Sincerely, all the folks I named earlier.
Okay, great. Great. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Clerk Reed. We're going to go into public comment right now, and based on the number of people that we have set up, that have signed up, I'm going to give up to two and a half minutes, if people need it tonight. And City Clerk, if you wouldn't mind keeping track, I will ask folks, if you would, again, be conscious, if that buzzer rings, please wrap it up in 10 seconds, to be respectful to everybody else that's looking to speak, and the folks up here. Just so everyone knows, I mean, the way we run public comments certainly can be on any topic. Tonight, the item that is on the agenda for the City Council is the budget. It's the 2019 proposed budget. I know you just read the letter, Clerk Reed. Harley Clark is not on the budget this evening, so I just want to make sure people were aware of that. Okay? All right. So, the first three, we've got Elliot Zashin, Lenny Lampkin, and then Leslie Williams.
Good evening, members of the council and Mayor. My name is Elliot Zashin. I live in the 9th Ward. I'm here primarily to speak on behalf of retaining full funding for the Victim Services Program. However, I want to refer to the context in which the proposed cuts are taking place. We have heard that we are in an austerity situation. We have a significant budget deficit, and that takes priority really over everything else. But we have to think about, how did we get here? Has the city managed its resources carefully over the past six to eight years? It's difficult for an ordinary resident, and I regard myself as one of those, to even attempt to answer that question. But the council should be able to amass the data to begin to provide an answer. Without that kind of examination, we will never know whether these proposed cuts are justified. A second question is whether the city has explored fully sources of progressive revenue. This is, again, an issue because of the recent referendum on the real estate transfer tax. How will the increased revenue from the real estate transfer tax be allocated? I would urge the council to reserve it for both the Affordable Housing Fund and also to reduce the proposed cuts in important social services. This is what applying an equity lens to the city's expenditures requires. To go back to the victim advocate service, the victim services, the job of victim advocate requires a connection to the police department. It is casework that needs access to police records in order to help victims navigate police and court services and provide referrals. Victim services should be restored to the police department. Those who prefer to get services from the YWCA will still be able to do so, but this should not be the only option. The Y does not specialize in the legal side of advocacy and does not have ready access to police records. We would be losing a continuum of care if the city goes ahead and does this. The city has quite a history now of privatizing services for the most vulnerable. And one of the things that gets lost is, when these cuts are made, do the people who are impacted the most, does the city know? Does the city research who actually loses? Most of the time when a program is cut, it's unfortunate, we have a budget deficit, we don't bother to find out who's hurt and how much of a difference it made in their life. Unless we start to answer those kinds of questions, it's easy to go ahead and cut services. But I think, over the period that this has become more prevalent, privatization consolidation programs has disproportionately impacted the people who need these services the most.
Thank you.
So I would urge you to think carefully about how we got here, and whether there are other sources of revenue that could be used to reduce these kinds of cuts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elliot. All right. We got Lenny Lampkin, Leslie Williams, then Melissa Appelt.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. I live in the 9th Ward. I've spoken to the City Council many times about privatizing services. A number of years back, I was a co-chair of a coalition here to make sure we didn't privatize city workers and city services. Yet, this year's budget is just a sneak attack. We are going to privatize the crossing guards. We're going to privatize the city's victim service advocates. And there's many other little things snuck into the budget that privatizes city services. I'll remind you that when we privatize city services, we lose connections as citizens to our city. We don't have a redress if the agencies don't do what they promise. And then they can come back and say, "Well, we need more money." And we always end up giving them the more money so that we don't lose the services, so we don't save any money. Ariel Jackson and Kelly Nelson are the city's victim service advocates. Until last year, they worked for the police department, where they assisted victims and families in case of domestic violence, sexual assault, death notocation, orders of protection, homicide or suicide. They would work every day and switch off overnight call responsibilities. So they were on 24/7. Is the YWCA going to provide 24/7 coverage? Are they going to have a crisis intervention team 24/7? Is that written into the contract? They would help officers and detectives question victims, console people when a loved one died, sit with those in a hospital while they were examined after a sexual assault, be called to the scene of a serious accident or crime to provide support to the victims, witnesses and family members, coordinate car rentals and hotel rooms for families who needed those services, and sit throughout many court cases with victims, explaining the process and procedure, or simply handing over tissues when they were needed. Last year, because of the budget, we moved from the police department to the Department of Human Services, and now they were given their layoff papers. So, I ask, in the city's own 2019 priority services done by our city manager, this city's victim services was ranked by residents as the fourth, the fourth most important service. It doesn't mean then we can contract it out and hope that it provides the same quality of service. It's not going to do that. A move that places these services even further from the police department and the victims who depend on them. Laying off these two people would mark an end to Evanston's 40-year history of providing crime victims with the services that they need at the moment, the moment that they're hurting the most, with immediate, direct, and ongoing social service support, who are specially trained in the field. And I'll just add, I did youth advocacy in public health my whole career. I ran and managed a crisis intervention team. When you contract out those crisis intervention workers, you lose the ability to get there on a moment's notice. And that's what these two employees do. They're there on a moment's notice. And hopefully, none of you, or any of your family members, will ever have to rely on these services. Because if you'll do, you'll realize how important these two people are to our city and to our members of our city. And I am one of those. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lenny. Leslie Williams, Melissa Appelt, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing names, and then Mary Rosinski.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor Hagerty. I'm not going to take up my whole two and a half minutes, because I think Elliot and Larry have said most of what I wanted to say. But I just wanted to stress that these two women, Ariel and Kelly, do a job that nobody else is really willing or able to do. And already, since they've been removed from the police department and put in Health and Human Services, they have felt that this has compromised the ability to do their job, because they're not immediately there when they're needed. One of them spoke of an incident where she was already in the hospital with the victim, but because she'd been moved from police services to Health and Human Services, she had to call to get the authorization to work with the victim before she could actually start helping the person. So this separation was delaying the care. And moving this to the YWCA, an organization that is not even part of the City of Evanston, would remove that continuum of care even more than it's already been removed. So I ask you to take a look at this proposal and to consider whether this is truly the best thing for the most vulnerable people in Evanston, considering that victim services is largely being used by the lowest-income African-American and Latino women. So, once again, the very vulnerable people in our community who really need this service. And I'm here with Reclaim Evanston, and also with several members of OPAL, saying to please prioritize our people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Leslie. Melissa Appelt, Mary Rosinski, then Janad Rizki.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Appelt, and I'm here on behalf of First United Methodist Church, Interfaith Action of Evanston Advocacy Committee, and prioritize our people. Since June, Interfaith Action Team has been meeting with city staff to speak out against proposed cuts to 2019 budget regarding the Mental Health Board and any vital community services used by people at risk or experiencing homelessness. Three weeks ago, our team presented almost 400 signatures from faith communities across Evanston, also urging the City Council not to cut funds to the Mental Health Board. Last week, Alderman Wynn requested any cuts from the Mental Health Board be removed from the proposed budget. That request is reflected in the most recent budget worksheet in the City Council's packet. We're here tonight to say thank you to Alderman Wynn, to the City Council and city staff for reinstatement of the Mental Health Board budget. We thank you for listening and for hearing the many voices of concern regarding important community issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Mary Rosinski, is Mary here? All right. Not seeing Mary. She comes up. We'll do that. Janad Rizki. Have I called your name?
I didn't get on the list. Can I be added?
You can be added. I will sneak you in after Janad Rizki. You can come on up.
I heard the mayor wrote an email to city staff because a citizen was criticizing their performance. That may or may not be true. Someone told me that. But let me be perfectly clear, because I have been criticizing performance of certain people, but not the city staff. I'm not criticizing the worker who's out here in sub-cloaked temperatures in a ditch because the water pipes broke. I've seen that gentleman out there a couple times. I've seen him here at City Council. I'm not criticizing him. I'm not criticizing the police officers or firefighters that do their jobs. Or really, the police officer that was in front of my house recently, because he had no backup to do his job, it was pretty disgusting, because while he cut all the people, like everything he's done here. Or I guess you've heard about the victim advocates, which I don't know a lot about, but it's the same thing. Time and time again here, everything's getting gutted and destroyed. I'm talking about Mr. Bob Kowicz's competence, and I'm talking about his direct staff's competence of what's going on here. I don't like what's happening with the crossing guards. I don't have children, young children, basically, but I see what's going on there. It's another scam of his that puts children at risk. Because when there's nobody there, is this company going to get people there? Or will we need to bring the police and the other people there to protect the children? And you are responsible for the streets here. That is your responsibility. Ever since he's been here, he takes things and he moves them, he guts them, he moves them around and gets rid of them. And that's what he's been doing. So the people of this community are getting wise, and they're going to get wise pretty soon off with a lot of these things. And as far as where this budget's going, 2020 is just as bad. Understand that. Understand that. James Park is coming with $2 million, all these lawsuits and problems are coming. At the last council meeting, I understood $800,000 was basically spent on legal fees. At the same time, you're taking in $800,000 on raising the property taxes, so wiped it out completely. It didn't go to social services or anything else. So frankly, basically, you've seen, are going to see a 15% to 20% property tax in 2020, and the fees are going to be gone because you don't have any more fees to raise. You were at 17% this year. And I'll tell you what, the other thing he did probably four or five years ago was with the recycling stickers. Those numbers were not correct, and that created even a bigger hole. And I suspect some of these fees will not materialize, so you'll deal with a bigger hole in 2020. So that's my problem here. And you know, you ought to be in executive session tonight talking about what Mr. Bob Kowicz recently did with this land swap deal he wants to do. Because Alderman Fleming did ask him how much, you know, was this going to cost any money? He sat there and he looked off into space, and then he asked, can I proceed with it? And Alderman Braithwaite said yes. You ought to be asking him in executive session what's going on here, because you are responsible to deal with this. You may not want to talk about it in public, but you need to deal with it, because I know that land swap will cost us probably in excess of $1 million, it's a scheme. And just in the middle of a budget crisis, we're wasting money. It's amazing. We're going to protect a private interest over citizens and everything else here. Thank you.
Vivian Moore, excuse me, I'm sorry, come, come, come on up. Yeah, yeah, come, come on up, and then I've got Vivian Choud and Tracy Kurtser.
Hi, Kathy Kerns. I'm here with my son Nathan, who's at Dawes Elementary. My husband and I have been Evanston residents since 2009, and I'm here to voice my support for making whatever budget adjustments are necessary to fully fund our EMS and firefighters in Evanston and keep Fire Station Number Four open. I think every Evanston resident should care about this issue, but I have an extra reason to be invested because my son Nathan, who is with me tonight, has a severe life-threatening food allergy. If my son accidentally eats a food he's allergic to, his throat will start to swell closed, and he will die without emergency treatment. We have EpiPens at home, but an EpiPen is only meant to treat an allergic reaction for 10 minutes. If an EMS response is not there when the EpiPen wears off, a child or an adult will die. This is one of the countless situations where the response time of the EMS can mean the difference between life and death. I won't bore you with the other medical conditions that require a fast emergency response, but as a nurse, I can promise you that response time matters. I've written to my Alderman, to you, Mayor Hagerty, and to our city manager, I want to be very clear, I don't need a new ice rink. I need a timely EMS response. Thank you.
Thank you. So, just so, just so folks are, there's a lot of moving pieces here with the budget, and so just so everybody knows, the proposed revised budget that we're going to be discussing tonight does not have Firehouse Number Four eliminated. It's actually, so it's funded in the budget. Okay, let's go to the next speaker, Vivian, do we have a Vivian? Okay, come on up Vivian, then Tracy Kurtser, then Carl Klein.
Good evening, my name is Vivian Chu, I'm a physician in Evanston and a resident of the Third Board. I'm here to voice my support for victim services. The police and the community have repeatedly supported victim services. Why would any Evanstonian elect to dissolve or dilute a useful resource to our city's most vulnerable citizens? The program should remain intact the way it is. The relationship between advocates and police officers and resources should remain intact as well. Cutting or reorganizing victim services does not reflect the values of Evanstonians. I am not a social worker or a government official, but as a physician, I can tell you when Illinois privatized Medicaid years ago, it has impacted our patients extremely negatively. It has added layers of bureaucracy, inconsistency and fragmentation to medical care for the most underserved patients. It has complicated pharmacy benefits, specialty care and general access to care. I've had patients travel from two hours away just to see me, and I don't think it's because I'm the best doctor in Illinois, I think it's because it's a really screwed up system now. I don't believe privatization adds any value but only barriers to our most underserved, and I would ask that you support the most vulnerable citizens of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, doctor. We got another doctor up, Dr. Kurtser. Okay, and then we've got Carl Klein, then Mike Fasilko.
All right, good evening, Mayor, and thanks, City Council members. So I'm Tracy Kurtser, most of you know me here as a member of Moms Demand Action. I'm always here speaking on behalf of gun violence prevention and awareness efforts in the city. But tonight, I'm here really to speak about gun violence from the opposite end, which is, once it's happened, and what do we do as a community to support the victims and their families? What many of here, of you here don't know is that I am a physician, I'm an OB-GYN, and my work is really with, mostly with women who are survivors of domestic violence, sexual assault, and who are dealing with the trauma of threats from gun violence, physical assault or sexual assault. I'm currently the Medical Director of Trauma Informed Care and Education at Northwestern Medicine, the head of the Intimate Partner Sexual Violence Prevention Group, and the Community Physician Liaison for our university campus Coalition on Sexual Violence. So I really have experience here with working with these victims. And I cannot adequately explain in a minute how much our patients rely on our victim services advocates. They support their lives after a terrible, traumatic, life-altering event, and I believe our police officers really do respect and rely on these services for victims of crime. They can focus on solving the crime because they're really, may not be able to be here and comment publicly, I want to speak on behalf of a few that I know. So we know the two women have been introduced already, Ariel and Kelly, they do incredible and seems like underappreciated work. And I do really believe that the work that they do reduces future violence in our city, reduces potential suicides. They are helping those members in our community who are most in need of emergent support. It would be very short-sighted for our city to cut these positions and their services for the, for budget reasons. Their loss would be a huge loss to our city and to my patients. I don't know if any of you are aware, there was just a shooting at Mercy Hospital today, an emergency room physician was shot. I hope her family has access to victim services as I would want for my family if something happened to me. So please support them in our budget. And I also want to just quickly add here, if I have a few more minutes, the EPD Evanston Police Department will be holding another gun buyback event Friday, December 8th at 11:00. Moms Demand Action will be volunteering and providing coffee treats and support. This is a community event, it's a safe and secure way for people to have unadmitted guns removed from their homes. Guns in homes are frequently utilized in suicides or responsible for the deaths of young children. Please support this event by letting your friends or family members know who own guns and don't want them, about this opportunity, they can make $100 of cash for the holidays, and it makes our community safer. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Dr. Kurtser. We've got Carl Klein, Mike Fasilko, and then Harris Miller.
Good evening. On November 6th, Evanstonians were asked a question and gave you a resounding yes that the city of Evanston shall protect from demolition and preserve the landmark Harley-Clark buildings and gardens next to the Lighthouse Beach for use and access as public property consistent with the Evanston Lakefront Master Plan at minimum or no cost to Evanston taxpayers. Standing outside Lincoln School, I talked with Ruth Bauer, a 92-year-old who fled Nazi Germany for America in 1936, about why she believes we should be stewards of our beloved Harley-Clark mansion and Jen's Jensen Gardens. She is quoted in the Chicago Tribune saying, quote, "Some of the past should remain with us. We shouldn't forget it, we shouldn't eliminate it for a buck." At the recent National Trust for Historic Preservation Conference in San Francisco, Thompson May's Deputy General Counsel spoke with me about the importance of continuity to mental health and the importance in the maintenance of identity and integrity of community. Evanston is distinguished for having its Shakespeare Garden and gardens at Harley-Clark, both of which were designed by Jen's Jensen, a nationally prominent landscape architect. Thompson May's in the National Trust for Historic Preservation "Why Do Old Places Matter" series quoted President Kennedy, quote, "I look forward to an America which will not be afraid of grace and beauty, which will protect the beauty of our environment, which will preserve the great old American houses and squares and parks of our national past, and which will build handsome and balanced cities for a future. Please remember the Athenian oath you all took when you were sworn in," is council members. "We will transmit this city greater, better and more beautiful than it was transmitted to us. Please honor the respectful request from the organizations in the joint letter Clerk Reed read into the record. I hope you will instruct staff to withdraw the city's demolition request for the Harley-Clark mansion. Thank you."
Thank you, Carl. Mike Fasilko, then Harris Miller, then James Engelman.
Thank you. There are two main reasons why the city has a 2019 budget deficit. Unnecessary spending on frivolous expensive projects and unnecessary financial waste due to inexperienced office staff making bad decisions without tax, with our taxpayer dollars. Without these two factors, Evanston would have a budget surplus in 2018 and would not have to cut social programs in 2019. These are facts, and the arithmetic is that simple. Alderman Sufferin feels it's rude of me to remind the council of its voting and spending record as illustrated on the board Janad is helping me with tonight. It's not personal, and I'm not, and I'm surprised that the message on the board is taken as such an affront. It's just the facts. Eight members of the City Council voted unanimously for a huge increase in Evanston debt limit, approved the sale of $85 million in new bonds, plus millions of dollars in annual interest on the debt. All of this financial burden to be paid on the backs of Evanston citizens for the decades to come. It's not rude, it's a fact. Alderman Braithwaite was not present that evening, he did not vote, and therefore he's not pictured. The mayor at the time supported the city going deeply into debt rather than raising property taxes to pay for the $53 million, not, no bid, Robert Crown project, and to pay $2 million for a building dedicated to the Private Theater Company on Howard Street. And the mayor at the time promised that he would not use property tax increases to balance the budget for 2019, but that was then. With the spending binge well on its way, the city is telling the community now that we have to cut youth and young adult services, cut victim services, cut other social services and raise taxes, fees and fines to balance the budget. A 2% property tax increase was disclosed just last week, supported by the mayor to balance the budget. The mayor and the council have deceived us by promising not to raise property taxes, then at the last minute changed their minds to support property tax increases. That is rude. Citizens are still recovering from a huge school board tax increase and the Madigan income tax increase. The library board just passed another property tax increase, and the newly-elected governor will soon propose statewide tax increases. Tonight, the City Council has an opportunity to pile on more taxes, fees and fines, or refrain from doing so. I hope you do the latter. It's your vote, it's your record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. All right, next, we've got Harris Miller, James Engelman, yes, come on up. Harris Miller, James Engelman, then Joshua Hall.
Good evening, council members and city manager, Mayor Hagerty, thank you for having me up here. I'm from the Fourth Ward in Evanston. I'm very concerned about Ariel Jackson and Kelly Nelson being laid off from their advocacy jobs in victim services because of our budget crisis. They perform important duties to assist the EPD in health services in asking questions. They help victims of violent crimes, sexual assault, domestic issues and counsel victims in tough situations. Ariel and Kelly, they work consistently and tirelessly, almost 24/7. I do not understand who would respond to these emergency situations in a timely manner if they were brought to the YWCA instead. Historically, we were the second city in the country to have victim services dating to 1976. It would be devastating for, after 40-plus years, if Evanston were to move this vital service while surrounding communities have their own. Now, please also keep Keith Brown's At Risk Youth and Young Adult Program and Mental Health Services in mind, too. I want them to perform effectively as Mr. Brown wishes. The residents depend on you to make the right decision, and thank you for having me up here.
Great. Thank you, Harris. We've got James Engelman, then Joshua Hall, then Betty Esther.
Good evening, I'm James Engelman from the Fifth Ward. Mayor Hagerty, happy birthday.
Thank you, Jan.
Oh, you're doing a good job. I would like to talk about, you're hiring Anamfame to take care of the crossing guards, that's a good idea, because I remember when I was younger, I had some relatives that used to be security guards, and I think it's a good idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you, James. Next up, Joshua Hall, Betty Esther, then Doreen Price.
Members of council, city manager, Clerk Reed, my name is Joshua Hall, member of the Eighth Ward. I have been coming to city council meetings for quite some time. I have also been attending different events in our city that sponsor and support those that truly need it. I've seen many of you there, and I want to thank you, but I also know that for some people, that isn't enough. I was speaking to some families at some of these events, and they have told me that the Youth and Young Division has opened the eyes of their young man, their young woman, has allowed them to participate in their community again. I've heard them and how they speak, how victim services have aided them, and how they couldn't imagine not having these services. They couldn't imagine their young man, growing up, not having faith that they were able to keep going on, that if something were to happen due to the programs not being installed, that I'm not sure the victim services are there for me. Today, a lot of these individuals just want to know that you all care, they want to know that this is a benefit to them, and that we are really making a change. I would like to encourage each and every one of you during the call of wards comments, such as Alderman Fleming has done, to speak to the fact of how these programs have benefited each and every one of your wards, and look deep down in your hearts and see how it has benefited, what can be changed, how it can be made better, because the citizens of our city agree that this city is better. Thank you.
Thank you, Joshua. Ms. Esther, and then Doreen Price, then Ray Friedman.
I went through the packet and everything, and on page 269 is a worksheet that was went through on the 12th that gave figures, reason why these changes and things was made. My question tonight is, what happened, or when will you know if the revenue that you are expecting to receive in the end of 2018 and the first quarter of 2019 does not come in? What will our situation be? We are at a deficit? Would that put us even further down the line? So I think we need to know that before you approve this budget tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Esther. We've got Doreen Price, Ray Friedman, Alex Finnegan, and then the last one will be Jerica Ross.
I'm glad there are people who pointed out what many people feel across the community, not just a subset of the community, that social services are essential for our community in general. We, like I mentioned last week, in terms of economic development, it seems that the whole city council is oriented in that direction, and it's somehow or another, making money is, in and of itself, is going to make Evanston grow as a community. We know that we get things from nonprofits, and we say, oh, we don't want to support nonprofits if they can't pay taxes. So we want things for free, but we don't realize that what we do in our own organization, our own house, is worth far more than what anybody can give us, because we're giving from within, and we're talking to people who are suffering. And what's, whenever you have someone overseeing the group that's being Whenever you have someone overseeing the group that's being affected, and you don't have adequate representation of the people being affected, such as in the steering committee, you're inviting discord that doesn't need to be there. And so I suggest that Health and Human Services be a focal point, not someone, that you decrease resources, because I myself personally never thought in a million years I'd need the help of a social worker. Without her, I think I would not be alive, okay? And that's not an overstatement. And there's a lot of other people who feel the same way. Now, the value of a life is a lot. If I'm a pain in the butt, maybe it's not so much, but I tend to think that I'm trying to say something to you that you already know, and that's an Emerson kind of bent that I have, and that we all have the power to act from the best part of ourselves. I'd like the city council to start looking at things not just from the economics of it, but that economics cannot survive without the human element, and that community development should be top on our list, and that should be Health and Human Services. And Health and Human Services have proved that they generate money, and we need grants. We need grants to help people. There's a person within Evanda's group that is assigned to homelessness prevention. Does anyone even know about that? That group needs more funds. You need the two people. You don't need just one. Or at least keep the assistant director's job open and see what happens and emerges when people start thinking creatively. Thank you.
Thank you, Doreen. All right. We've got Ray Friedman, Alex Finnegan, and then Jerika Ross.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty, city council. First, I'd like to say I don't understand why the relationship between the community, the residents, and city council seems to be so controversial. This is our fifth budget meeting, I believe, in five weeks. I thought we had a handle on the budget back in April. I know you have a difficult task in front of you. I would not want to be sitting up there instead of you, and I do appreciate the efforts that those of you have made to try to make this 2019 budget work for all of us. Congratulations to all Evanston residents for making 2018 election the highest voter turnout ever. This shows that we want to be involved in this process and was created for all of us to enjoy. And concerning the budget, we see this as a four-part process. Number one, choose a project. Number two, determine how much the total cost will be. Number three, how the project will be paid for. And most important, get resident input as to whether we agree with the project and the expense. To finish our comments, we have two questions. Have you looked at all the memos, charts, graphs, and worksheets as to the impact of this 2019 budget on all Evanston residents that we are paying for? And lastly, but most important, have you taken into account the input of the Evanston residents who desperately want to be a part of this process? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ray. Alex Finnegan, and then Jerika Ross will be the last speaker today.
Many of the topics that everyone discussed was really respectful. The Harley Clark Mansion is a great site. That needs to be preserved. The Health and Human Services is valuable. You need people in Evanston. Otherwise, your tax money will not be paid, because you need people to generate the money. And the gun laws are a really big debate. That's definitely a great cause to be a part of. However, there's one cause that I'm advocating for that I think everyone should be a part of. The reason being is because the sustainability and CARP movement, which I'm advocating for, are key to creating cost efficiencies. And as you all know, we're here to discuss the budget tonight. Our budget is not looking good, and all of the green energy and sustainability movements that we've signed up for in Evanston over the years has created cost efficiencies, and those cost efficiencies help the budget. Now, the Climate Action and Resiliency Plan is a movement that is trying to make Evanston 50% less carbon generating of a city by 2025 and carbon neutral by 2050. So far, in Evanston, we've decreased our carbon output by 25% since the year 2005, and throughout the process, we've been cutting costs, not generating them. As all of the green technologies become more efficient, they start saving money in the long run, not costing more money. Now, think about it. Global warming is a serious problem. That's scientifically proven to be the case throughout the globe, given that throughout the vast majority of the Earth's history, it's gone in cycles that have taken eons to change the temperature. So if you think about how quickly the temperatures changed in the past century or so, that's clearly something that's out of the ordinary. So the only way we could combat that is advocate for the Climate Action and Resiliency Plan and any other sustainability movement. And as I said earlier, that will cut costs, which will enable us to advocate and support all the other causes that everyone else is advocating for. Thanks.
Thank you, Alex. All right. And our last speaker today is Jerika Ross. Welcome.
Hello. Good evening. I'm here to voice my support for the continuing funding for the victim service advocates. Five years ago, my child's father was murdered, and from day one, we've had an advocate in our corner, providing us with very imperative information that we needed as far as services available to us, resources, helping us to understand what's taking place at all the court proceedings. Right now, we're still in pre-trial motions and so forth. They provide us with a great deal of emotional support, especially just Tuesday at our last court date, in which was the first time that all three people were present, the defendant and the two witnesses that were there. And I found myself breaking down, and Ariel came out, and she comforted me, she supported me, she provided a distraction to keep my attention away from one of the people and his family as he left the courthouse, as I was waiting for the state's attorneys to come out and basically break down what's going to, you know, transpire as they're trying to get everything settled for trial. So I just feel like victim services is a service that we really need here in this community, especially during trial. Like I said, we've been going back and forth to court for the last five years, and Tuesday, it awakened a lot of feelings that I'm pretty sure, once trial comes about, those feelings will be there. And as far as the family, you know, we'll all probably be broken, because it was like a jab that we felt when we first got the news of, you know, the murder. And it's like, I believe we'll all pretty much be broken, and to have that additional support there is very important.
Thank you, Jerika. Sorry for your loss. Thank you for coming up. All right. That concludes public comment this evening. Thank you, everybody, for coming out and sharing your perspective and your thoughts or your concerns. We're now going to move to the agenda. What I'd like to do, as you'll see in this agenda, we have a lot on this agenda. Practically all of these items are relating to the budget. And so what I'd like to do is I'd like to go to item number 36.
Perhaps do you want to do the... Did you want to do that?
Okay. So we're going to, before I get to having the city manager walk us through the budget and the revisions since our last meeting, I'm going to go ahead and just do item number one, which is for action. This is the agreement for crossing guard services with Andy Frain Services Incorporated. The staff recommend city council authorize the city manager to enter into a three-year agreement with Andy Frain Services to provide crossing guard services in the amount not to exceed $620,662 per year with two one-year option extensions, and that's the item for action this evening. So is there a motion to move that item?
Move to approve that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So we're going to open it up for discussion. I think the city staff is going to come and present some background on this.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council, Clerk Reed, manager Bobkowitz. I just am going to introduce Ed Millard from Andy Frain Services, who's going to give a very brief statement, and then will be available for questions if there are any questions.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Ed Millard, and on behalf of Andy Frain Services, we are excited to become your partner in providing crossing guard services and the safe corridor for your school students and your future leaders of the city of Evanston. Andy Frain Services currently manages over 25 crossing guard programs in the Chicagoland area. Eighteen of them are with municipalities. Our commitment to the city of Evanston is to welcome all the existing crossing guards into our transition. We will also go ahead and do our recruitment focusing on the residents of the city of Evanston. Our field supervisor that we will go ahead and implement in this program will come from the city of Evanston. With that situation there and that, I open it up for any questions.
Thank you, Randy. Stay right there. We've got a few lights going on. Alderman Randy, then Alderman Fleming.
Good evening. I have no problem with the concept of switching to you. However, we once privatized the garages, management of the garages, and we were promised by a vendor many years ago that I will keep all your employees, I will keep your employees on, and for sure, he did that the first year. Then, when it was time for raises, because he could get cheaper people, all of our employees were laid off, all of them. So it's not your job to make a contract airtight, but I am saying to our staff, this contract needs to be airtight. Our people need to transition to this company without fail, if they want to, if they want to, and they cannot be ceremonial, unceremoniously dismissed after the first year or whenever wages are to be renegotiated, because that will just defeat the whole matter of us going to private, which is why most people don't like to go private, because they don't trust going forward, just saying.
Thank you, Alderman Randy, Alderman Fleming.
I have a similar concern, although I wasn't here for the garage situation, but my question has to do with kind of that same thing. So I've read your material. One thing I will say, I appreciate your full list of your attempt to find a WMBE vendor. So I appreciate you listed it out there and who responded and who didn't. But my question, I guess, is more so, you mentioned, you know, you give some pictures of the uniforms, and you talk about the transition, and you talk about one more service. Let's see, it's transition, the uniforms, and, sorry, my little computer's not... and the training. So being that I know where I live, I have a couple crossing guards who have been there a long time. They're great. I don't think they necessarily need any training. So, you know, as these people have been in this job for a while and are doing a good job, kind of what is your onboarding? Because I don't want this to be more difficult for our really great crossing guards, where they feel like this has become more of a frustration, that they have to go through some new protocol, they have to buy some new, you know, equipment. Right now, they just, I think, all wear a vest. So can you tell me a little bit more about what the difference between what they're doing now and what your onboarding and transition is?
Our goal for the transition is to make it as seamless as possible. We want to bring on all the current crossing guards. In order to do that, we will bring the necessary staff in order for us to go ahead and onboard them. We will also put them through our training, which is really just a subset or an enhancement of what you've already done for your team members there, which is kind of getting them immersed into the Andy Frain situation that we've got. In our conversations with the parking division of the city of Evanston, we talked about being seamless. So we sat there and said, okay, as we make this transition, let's not change the uniform. Go ahead and let your existing uniform that you have with the team members come on over so that everything looks pretty natural to the community, all right? We're not looking at going ahead and moving crossing guards and that to different locations. They've made great relationships with the community. We do not want to change that. Do not want to disrupt the students, do not want to disrupt the community, want to be the best partner we can go ahead and be on that situation.
So in that training piece, will you be doing training here? I don't know where you're headquartered, but I think about, again, the crossing guards in near my house, they're retirees. I don't know what they do the majority of the day. Will you be coming here to train at a convenient time and location for them?
We are going to do everything we need to do in the city of Evanston. We are not going to ask them to go ahead and come to any of our branch locations. So we will work with the city, with the parking division, to get a location so that we can do our onboarding, we can do our training, we can do all that type of work locally, all right? Do not, definitely do not want to go ahead and have them go any further than they have to. I want to be a service to them. I want to come to them.
Great. Thank you, Alderman Fleming. All right. Seeing no more lights, we had a motion and a second. City clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Win, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Rue Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Suffren. Alderman Ravel.
Aye.
Alderman Randy.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
I have a question. We're just approving one year, correct?
No, this is one year with two one-year options.
With two one-year, but just one year? Okay, aye.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite.
All right. You were an aye, Alderman Fleming? Were you an aye?
I was an aye.
Okay. All right. So the agreement for the crossing guards with Andy Frain Services Incorporated passes the Evanston City Council on an eight-to-one vote. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming out and speaking. City manager, let's go and move forward. I'd like to do a discussion on the budget, which is item number 36, Resolution 101-R-18, fiscal year budget of the city of Evanston, and this is for action. Is there a motion to move this forward so we can discuss?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We're going to open it to discussion, although I want, I would like the city manager to go through the changes that he's made since the last time, but I see your light up. Is there...
It was a kind of a, I'll call it a preliminary matter. A number of people spoke on the Youth and Young Adult Division, and I think the city manager has already kind of laid out the fact that there aren't going to be changes. I think maybe it will be constructive for the community to just know, you know, that it's fully funded.
Sure.
And exactly how things are going to proceed, so that there is no, you know, there's a lot of confusion out there.
Yeah.
So if you could...
Terrific.
Yeah, I think the mayor mentioned that.
So city manager, if you can go through, I know you've made changes, and it's in our packet. If that could be shown since our last meeting, hit on those two points, and then we'd also, I think it would be helpful to have you possibly have your health department director come up, and let's have a conversation about victim services, since that's been discussed quite a bit tonight.
And Alderman Wilson asked about Youth and Young Adult. I did provide the city council an email today. Over the last couple of weeks, have really listened to the members of the community, have had an opportunity to talk with many of you. I'll thank Alderman Rue Simmons specifically for really helping me sort through what's best for the community, have talked with other members of the council. And what I shared with the council this afternoon was an email indicating that I believe that at this point, it makes sense to leave Mr. Brown, the community services manager, and the Youth and Young Adult Division as is, at least through the middle part of next year. In the email, I talked about an initiative that our deputy city manager... In the email, I talked about an initiative that our deputy city manager, Kimberly Richardson, has begun last June, June of 2018, to look at all of our social services functions. And I'm going to ask that she continue this process, look at the issues of workforce as part of that evaluation, and then come back to me no later than June 1 with her analysis. So the Youth and Young Adult Division, again, was never part of this budget. It was never going to be reduced. All of the employees doing that good work, we're going to continue to do that good work. I want to make that very clear from the outset. But certainly, given the community dialogue, given the concern of some staff members, I really thought that it was the best for the community to put this forward into the larger review of social services. So that information was provided to the council, was provided to the impacted staff members earlier today. Let's go now to the Budget Balancing Worksheet, Ms. Louise Laken. There are some revisions to that. If you will look at your agenda packet on page 269, and we'll also put it up on the screen for you. In green are those changes that were shared last week at the discussion. So the changes that are new to the Budget Balancing Worksheet are those in blue. So we can move into the parking area. The council had asked that we move forward with adding two parking enforcement officers. That has been included here in the Budget Balancing Worksheet. We have taken the increased revenue down from $400,000 to $300,000. We want to be prudent that we are realistic about the impact that those parking enforcement officers would have with tickets and fines. Next, we had talked about a change last week that we were planning on implementing regarding street sweeping, eliminating, in most cases, the tow. We believe that the changes associated with that will allow us to generate an additional $300,000 in revenue and will not impact the dollars that our residents are paying. Ms. Dorley, please correct me if I'm speaking incorrectly, so that those dollars are not, will not impact the residents, it merely changes the allocation of where that money goes. So the tow, with the tow being eliminated, instead, most of those dollars come back to the city through the ticket itself. So we discussed that with the council, and given some of the other changes, we've gone ahead and added that to the Budget Balancing Worksheet. Toward the bottom of the sheet is an issue regarding the reimbursement of electric and telecommunications taxes to District 65 and District 202. We have been doing that historically. We also provide a reimbursement of a gas, of natural gas taxes, which are mandated under state law. Rather than eliminate that reimbursement, we're proposing that that reimbursement be cut approximately in half to reflect the conversations that I've had with the two school superintendents. We have a long history of sharing resources between District 65, District 202, and the city. And I think, in the spirit of that, wanted to make that adjustment just to be half versus the full dollar amount. On the next page, no changes on page 270. Well, one change that should have been highlighted, which is not under Health and Human Services, the mental health board reduction has been eliminated. So the mental health board now is being proposed to be funded at its full dollar amount of $736,373. Police Department, so we've gone through, the Fire Department, again, are looking not to make any changes as far as Fire Station 4. That will continue. All those items were discussed at the last meeting. The reorganization of Park Staff, we've gone back and looked at those numbers and have made a $50,000 change there, decreasing the savings from $163,000 to $113,000. So with that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that gives us a balanced budget with a surplus of $242,000. I think we have largely addressed the issues that have been raised of concern, the issues with victim advocates. We're prepared to talk about further. Director Thomas Smith is here and can give an overview, but before she gets up, and we can just answer if there's any questions about anything else.
Yeah, I think we have one question here. Alderman Braithwaite?
Looking for clarification on the three Health Department positions, if you can scroll down.
So we added last week a Management Analyst position, that's actually now a Senior Management Analyst position. In talking with Director Thomas Smith, I think, and I'll let her speak as well, that if it was going to be a Management Analyst, she asked that it be a Senior Management Analyst in order to be able to attract a higher skill set. Is that fairly stated?
That is correct.
Okay, so we've got one more question here, and then we'll get to you, or maybe I've got two more. Alderman Rennie?
I don't have a question. I'm wondering, I asked the question about the entertainment slash amusement tax last week, and was told it's at 4% for only for-profit operations, such as Century Theater, Space, those kind of places. Four entities contribute to that fund. I would like to move that we raise that to 5%, in other words, add a percentage. I don't think anybody going to the theater is going to notice it. People who get into entertainment need to support the arts, and I think it's one good way to support the arts by taxing the arts. Secondly, I was very surprised to see that no one else, for example, North Light would not have a ticket tax if they were in Evanston. I think that's very unusual. So I would like to propose, and I would suppose the manager is going to say, for this session, we probably wouldn't be able to do it for a year, but I certainly hope we could impose the tax and collect it perhaps for three-quarters of the year. I think there should be a 2.5% amusement tax on all live theater in the city of Evanston that is not church-run, District 65 or District 202-run. Everybody else needs to contribute to the arts in addition to providing us with entertainment. Those of us who attend those events, I believe, will pay a 2.5% tax. So I'm going to move and increase in the for-profit by 1% and add to regular live performances of any kind. And the list is in there, it's an ABC list, and I've sent a memo to everybody regarding this. I don't know what the 2.5% will generate, but it'll be a few dollars, I'm certain. And we were told that $40,000 would be generated by the 1% added to theater tickets and for-profit performances. So I would like to move that.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay. So what I'd like...
And Mr. Mayor, Alderman Rennie, just to be clear, we're talking about the percentage rate.
Yeah.
Okay.
On the price of the ticket.
Right, so this is not increasing it by a percent?
Well, there is no, there is nothing on the North Lights and the Theo Ubaquays and those kind of shows, noise, arts.
Right, but we're talking the rate.
Right.
The percentage rate.
Two and a half percent on the price of the ticket, and an increase of 1%, in other words, from 4% to 5% on the for-profit or entertainment tax, yes. And that tax is, the 4% is currently being collected on the price of the ticket. Is that not correct? Or on their, I saw where it's on their IRS forms, that's how we get that number?
And again, it's just, I want to make sure that it's the percentage rate that you're talking about.
Yes, yes, of course.
Okay, so we've got a lot of things in the budget, and I think there's going to be potentially a lot of ideas. So I've got a motion, and I got a second on that motion, and I don't know, protocol-wise, can we move on to another topic?
You have to.
We have to vote.
I'm sorry, I have to vote, I have to vote on this. Okay, so let me, I've got a whole bunch of other lights, and they could be on different topics, so...
I'd like to talk on this topic.
Okay, you want to talk on this topic. Okay, so my order of this, that I've got on lights, and again, this is going to be on this topic, is Fleming? Alderman Fleming, do you have anything on this?
Well, yeah, I would, I know that Alderman Rennie mentioned three places that she would like to exclude. I would like to amend and add the Evanston Children's Theater. I think they are a nonprofit, but they are not doing big business theater. That's mostly parents and grandparents and such buying those tickets, so I would not feel comfortable taxing them.
I will say children's theater, you know, but adult theater, performing arts, we need to tax.
Mudlar, accepted.
I'm sorry, just so I'm clear on this motion, so we're excluding all of the kids' performing theaters?
Okay, but here's what I'm asking. I'm asking for the 1%, and I'm asking for the 2.5% to be imposed probably three-quarters of the year, in other words, starting in March. So, because we don't have the numbers.
Yep.
So I can't argue adding that to the budget right now.
Okay.
But the 1%, but I am really, really enthusiastic about the 2.5% because, you know, we charge people extra to cover the cost of garbage for those who have their garbage collected. And I think for those of us who frequent the arts should support the arts in other ways, because it costs the city to, you know, have these...
Okay, all right, thank you.
And they came to us complaining they're not getting their full share of our contribution.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Rennie. We're going to go now to Alderman Winn, then Alderman Braithwaite, then Wilson.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't support either of these increases in the entertainment tax. No, Alderman Rennie, I don't. In particular, I don't support it because of Space, which is on Chicago Avenue, and has absolutely transformed live entertainment in the city of Evanston. Space does pay the 4% tax, but Space also has another location in the city of Chicago, which is exempt from their amusement tax, their entertainment tax, because it has fewer than, I believe it's 500 seats. And so we are disadvantaging any small for-profit live music space here in Evanston by increasing this tax any more than we already have, because in Chicago, if you're a small venue, even if you are for-profit, you're exempt from paying this tax. So Space does fantastic business, but it's a narrow margin, and they have really been an economic engine here in Evanston. I know people who go to Space who live in Oak Park, who live in Highland Park, who, people who travel from Wisconsin and Michigan to come see acts there, and they stay in Evanston. I don't want them to close their doors and decide to move down to Chicago, which is only a mile and a half away from their current location. I want them to stay there and bring people to our restaurants and our hotels. And then I, you can't pick and choose which not-for-profits are going to pay this tax or not. We can't have children's theater versus adult theater. I don't think legally we can do that, and I don't support that either. We want people to come to these events and encourage them to come. I don't, I, the arts community did ask to have some kind of coordinator for these arts programs. I think the city manager has indicated to us that there will be a staff person who coordinates these arts programs. I don't think that either of these increases are necessary in this budget, and I don't support them.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Winn, Alderman Braithwaite, and then Wilson.
I think Winn actually covered a lot of the talking points, so I'm not going to support it either. I would agree, and just, you know, speaking to many of the venues that provide live entertainment over the years, when they book these acts, it's not to make profit, it's literally to help bring people into their locations to support their businesses, and we benefit from the food and alcohol taxes. And I would have the similar concerns with trying to tax the non-for-profits. I can't think of any of them that this tax would impact that we don't support either through CBDG or any other grant process, so I don't see how that's going to help our budget any. So I will be voting no as well.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wilson?
And Alderman Braithwaite and Winn covered most of the points. In addition, for the small operators and the not-for-profits, there's also going to be costs associated with collecting the tax and remitting the tax. A lot of these groups, if they're small, they're small operators, they are barely getting by, but they're going to need more people that are probably going to have to volunteer to, you know, manage this bookkeeping stuff. And back to the competitive point, we also have a 6% tax on alcohol. So some of these venues that are serving alcohol, if you, you know, you've got the 6% on the alcohol, you've got the sales tax on other things, you've got, you know, another 5% on tickets. So if it goes from four to five, it's just consistently increasing that differential. And, you know, we're going to hit a point where, you know, rehabbing a place on the other side of Howard is going to start to make more sense than keeping it on this side.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Fleming, then Alderman Rennie.
So I'm not huge on taxes. I appreciate Alderman Rennie's creativity. What I will say in terms of this tax or taxing general is that we've sat here for the last several months, the city manager brought us a very difficult budget, people in the community voiced their concerns, we've put almost everything back on the table, and essentially, you know, again, Alderman Rennie brought up the real estate transfer tax. Thankfully, that passed. I would have liked to see that pass and put money into the Affordable Housing Fund, but we're not doing that. And then we are raising property taxes, which, you know, is what it is. But I think, I'm saying this to say, we have sat here, we have, you know, essentially put the budget back to where it was, we went back and forth over 50 cents and a quarter at parking spaces, and I guess I just am a little frustrated that we want to save everything, we want to have everything, but we're not sure how we're going to pay for everything. So at some point, I guess next year in the budget process, we have to just be a little more realistic. I understand that people don't want to tax this kind of thing, but, you know, I feel like it's worthwhile. If you go into the theater, you believe in the theater, you want the arts, you want the arts coordinator, money doesn't grow on trees, we have to pay for it somehow if we're going to, you know, answer and be responsive to what our citizens say they want. And so if I believe in the theater, I believe in arts, I go to the theater, I pay the two bucks or whatever it is, because I understand that's going towards something that I believe in, versus taxing, you know, the entire citizen base 2%, and I know that some people are not going to be able to afford that 2%. And so I just, I guess, want to encourage us to, you know, if not be creative about how we're going to find money, to really be a little more realistic about when we're going to cut and when we're going to put things back on the budget that we have to pay for somehow.
Thank you. Alderman Rennie?
Yeah, listening to Alderman Winn, who mentioned, or somebody mentioned, 6% liquor tax, I remember when we first put a liquor tax on. Nobody was going to come to the city of Evanston. Nobody would ever open a bar here. Nobody would ever do this. Nobody would ever do that. And, you know, our liquor tax saves the day now. I mean, and you have to beat these restaurants away with a stick to keep them out of town. Everybody wants a liquor license. Our mayors have been very generous with the liquor licenses. We're doing great. If you put another percent on a $40 ticket at Space, it's going to cost you 40 more cents. I'm sitting in Union, paying 15 bucks for six ounces of cheap wine, and I'm going to complain about the 40 cents? Really? Really, I, how can we sit here and say we're going to have an arts coordinator, but we're firing our victim services people? It doesn't make sense to me. We should do both, if we're a city that's so livable. We should do both.
Thank you, Alderman.
And the way we do both is we have revenue generated that is not regressive, that's not going after the little guy who's got to have his garbage collected, but yet we're raising that fee, and nobody's complaining about it, because it's covering the cost of a service to some extent. That's what I'm asking you to do here.
Thank you, Alderman Rennie. Alderman Braithwaite? Okay. So the, there was a motion, again, this would be to direct the city manager, because he'd have to put an ordinance together and everything, to increase the existing amusement tax from 4% to 5%, and to apply a new amusement tax of 2.5% to...
Actually, that's not, I don't want the other part included.
You don't want just to...
Yeah, I think we can work on that later, yeah.
All right, so it's just increasing the existing 4% to 5%.
This doesn't include the nonprofits?
This doesn't include the nonprofits, apparently. This doesn't include the nonprofits, apparently. Yeah, so, just the existing. Clerkery, can you take the roll?
Alderman Wynn?
No.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Yes.
Alderman Suffernin?
No.
Alderman Revelle?
No.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Fleming?
Yes.
Alderman Fisk?
No.
All right, that motion fails on a 6 to 3 vote. 6 to 3 vote, okay.
3 to 6.
Oh, well, it failed 3 to 6, 6 to 3, it failed. Okay, all right. Okay, Alderman Rainey?
I'm embarrassed to say that I missed a charge in the recycling increases. It's more or less a fine on people who our city collects recycling from. They look in the can, and there's, you know, something that shouldn't be in there. And so, we're going to start, we're going to charge, I guess maybe we have been charging, I don't know, $25 per person for any illegal items in their recycling can. I would like to move to strike that. I think it's supposed to raise like $40,000 or something because there is not one person in this city who has a blue can, who is not going to get fined. Because if our, if our people are going to administer this and do the investigations equally, they are always going to find a can that has something dumped in it by somebody else that the person who owns the can cannot possibly, cannot possibly keep an eye on that can all the time. I can't even see my can from my house. So, I'm asking that we move that. Talk about regressive, that's just a mean and malevolent tax.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, let's go ahead and hear from the city on this, and then we'll open it to conversation.
Good evening, Dave Stoneback, Public Works Director. Staff put this in, the current ordinance, the way it's written, is that it would be a special pickup charge that would be assessed to them. So, it's currently $60, and in the proposed ordinance, it would go to $100. So, we didn't think that that was appropriate, so we came up with the $25. The type of contamination that we're talking about is for when people throw pumpkins into the recycling can. When people constantly put their recycling materials in a garbage plastic bag that isn't a recyclable material. Or for other residents that continually put other plastics in it that is not recyclable type of material. We understand that there's a, the potential to have somebody else throw something in your recycling cart, but what we're concerned about is that now an employee has to pull the pumpkin out. That if the plastic bag is, is all the recycling materials in a plastic bag, we have to tear the plastic bag open and dump it out. So, we try to educate residents about what the proper recycling materials are. There's stickers on the carts. This past summer, we targeted an area where we had the summer youth kids go around and hand out notices, put stickers on carts again to try to remind residents what is the appropriate material to go in a recycling cart. And that's what we set this proposed collection fee for. Not for the incidental, somebody threw something in one time. But we have repeat offenders that continually do not recycle materials appropriately. We've spoken to them, they just continue to do it. So, we were hoping to have some type of charge that we could do them. After you can't get them to cooperate, I think it's appropriate to have a penalty.
I think you should just take away their can. Just take it away if they're that abusive. Because I cannot believe that you're not going to find, if you administer this program fairly and you look and inspect every can, you're going to find errant items in those cans. And there's nothing in the ordinance that says you're going to be very careful about who you find.
Mr. Mayor, maybe I just ask Mr. Stoneback a question. We get regular reports about the contamination of our recycled materials?
We do from Groot, yes.
And what, on the average, is our rate?
I'm sorry, I don't know that number.
Alderman Rainey, members of the council, it is an issue that we have with contamination. I mean, we, the, what happens is that then any material that is included in these bags is not recycled, it becomes garbage. And so, that is a challenge for us. So, if you, if you think this fee is not incorrect, I don't know that pulling people's carts, certainly that would have an impact, although we would probably need to hire a few additional staff members just given the widespread nature of the contamination of our recycling stream. So, I think, again, we have fines for many, many things in this community. We, I think, generally prove ourselves pretty judicious when dealing with code enforcement. This is really in essence a form of code enforcement, that we need to keep the recycle stream clean to the greatest extent possible, recognizing, of course, there's always going to be the random soda cup that gets thrown in. But again, for those residences that either refuse to, are not educated, don't care, that has an impact on our ability to properly recycle.
Thank you. I've got several lights up here. Alderman Braithwaite, then Alderman Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I have a quick question slash concern. So, my concern is you've only identified one month, one day as an example. So, I'm hoping that there are more examples out there. But my understanding, and, you know, please enlighten me and other members of the council, we ship our recycling outside of Evanston, right?
That's correct. We take it to the Groot Recycling Center.
So, I'm going to make an assumption, I could be completely wrong, but we take our, they pick up all over town, and when they take our recycling, wherever it goes, I'm assuming there are other municipalities that send their recycling to the same location, right?
That's correct, yes, sir.
So, when my recycling goes into the big can, I typically, and I don't see it every day, but I don't see someone playing around in the can. They just pick up the can, poop, it goes into the truck, and then away it goes. So, I'm having a difficult time understanding how we're associating a fine to our residents with a service that is sorted outside of Evanston, and then it's mixed in with everyone else's recycling.
That is correct. But what we are trying to do is to get proper recycling materials placed in the recycling cart. And it's not just the pumpkins, but it's a daily, every week, people are using regular plastic GLAD trash cans,
Sure.
Bags to put the recycling in. But that GLAD trash bag is not a recyclable material. And we would like to try to correct people's habits on doing that. And we have attempted to do it by putting out the notices and talking to them.
Yeah, I guess I would filter my comments by, this sounds like something that we want to do a little bit more education with our residents, partnering with our environmental community and organizations versus assessing these fines that don't necessarily tie back to the city in any way, especially because the stuff is just leaving our town and being sorted with a bunch of other municipalities. That's just my opinion, and I'm not going to be support. I'm sorry, Alderman Rainey, I'm going to support you on this one.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wilson, and then Alderman Fisk.
Well, you know, it's not that hard. You know, and I see this kind of stuff, you know, they, and our staff sees, they dump the cart, and they see a bunch of white bags with stuff in it. Stuff is not supposed to be in a white bag in the recycling cart. There's a picture on every cart that they passed out. And the thing, you know, we, again, we have fines for lots of different things, but this thing actually costs money. So, we're paying money for this service, and when the stuff is contaminated, it costs money to deal with the contamination. It costs money to dig the plastic bags out of the sorting equipment. You know, it puts people physically at risk to do the task themselves. So, you know, people have had enough time to figure it out. So, you know, I'm sure if there's a Styrofoam cup in the cart, they're not going to write that up. I can't imagine that's the thing.
Not ever.
But it's the cart that every week that has, it's full of, you know, GLAD trash bags, or full of, you know, liquids that's ruining the recyclable materials. You go to Europe, and it's, or other countries, and it's so simple. There's these things on the street, you know. Nobody complains about the fact that there's this big dumpster on the street, and there are five of them, everybody takes their stuff out, and they put it in. You know, for us, you just got to walk a little bit out of the house and follow the instruction on the top of the cart. So, if we're not getting the compliance, I think we need to just take a little bit more of a step. And even if it's just, you know, the newspaper writing it up and saying, "Oh, you're going to get this fine," and it gets people to think about it, so be it. But we have to really start, like, walking the walk. You know, we can't be this arrogant little, "We're too precious to, you know, sort our recycling. Let's just do it right." It's a simple thing.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Fisk?
I like the idea that we're too precious, Alderman Wilson, but I don't think, I don't think we are. I agree with Alderman Rainey that this is a problem that I think we should take some steps in between before we start fining. So, the stickers that aren't removable, the penalty stickers, or the "You're doing something wrong" stickers that used to go on garbage cans, for example, are we using those? Is that something that we, how do we warn people about noncompliance right now?
They do receive a tag indicating that they have improperly...
Okay, so it's an adhesive sticker on their...
Yeah, I don't believe that. It's still removable, but it is a tag that's placed there, and it's sticky, but it can be pulled.
And are there any consequences attached to the tag?
Yeah, they won't pick up your recycling bin.
Okay, they, okay, they won't pick it up. I keep my recycling bin in my backyard because I don't want anyone else throwing stuff into it. But I also, when my good husband walks out with a pizza box that he fully intends to put in the recycling, and it is, it has oil in it, it's going to be rejected, and I'm opening us up for a $25 fine, I just don't think that, I don't think that's where we want to go right now. I much prefer an education outreach, and I know we've passed things out. I know the stickers, I've read the stickers in the recycling bin. But I just don't think this is going to be helpful. I would hope that those stickers will say, "We're not coming back to pick up your recycling until you've removed all of the plastic," because I think it was a help in the past when the guys picking up the garbage would write a personal note on there saying, "We're not picking up." So, that's just my, that's my suggestion, but I don't know why we're so... I just don't want to penalize people anymore.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Revelle, then Alderman Suffernin.
So, I guess I'm still trying to understand what we do right now because the memo says, "Current code indicates that placing nonrecyclable materials in the receptacle results in a special pickup fee." So, are we, is that what we currently do, and we're just trying to figure out what the amount is?
On rare occasions, yes. When somebody completely disobeys the proper procedures, we do do a special pickup fee if they don't clean out their trash and it just continues to accumulate within the recycling cart.
But that's very rare.
It is very rare, yes.
And so, if, when we come to collect their recycling, and it's in the white hefty GLAD bag or whatever, do we just, we just leave it behind? Or, because you would think that would be pretty educational to just, week after week, have the, have us reject their...
But at some point, they keep piling it in there, and then it doesn't close, and then it's overflowing, and then that's when it becomes an issue because they just believe that we'll continue to pick it up at some point. Or they begin to throw it in their other sanitation cart, and then we're not getting the recycling that we're hoping to get.
Right, yeah.
And there is no law requiring you to recycle.
And how rough numbers of how many households are we talking about with this?
I don't have the amount of households. There's areas in town that don't adhere to it. A lot of it is in the college area, if you will, from Noiz to Emerson, east of Ridge Avenue. And another area is between Emerson and Church, from Dodge Avenue going west. Those are the two areas where we have the most noncompliance.
It's 1,600 if you do the math, like, just divide 25 by, divided by 40,000, it's 1,600. Either households or occurrences, depending on how you want to spin it.
So, it's, yeah, I mean, I guess ultimately, I think I would favor a fine, but I'm thinking maybe we need to, we could try one more year of some really stepped-up education and enforcement short of a fine, just to see if we can...
We can do that.
City manager, did you want to...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think we appreciate the comments from the council. We'll come back. I'd like to withdraw this. This is, will be revenue to the solid waste fund. We'll come back after the first year. Kumar Jensen, I think, needs to be a part of this discussion, and also representatives from Groot and SWANK. I think there's larger issues here that rather than try to cover all of them tonight, you know, we really are part of special districts. The Solid Waste Agency of Northern Rhode Island County, we have responsibilities to provide a stream that's clean. I think it'd be useful to take more time to go through what efforts we've gone through in the past, have representatives from SWANK and Groot here to talk further about this. So, Mr. Mayor, we'll withdraw that. We'll make the necessary changes to the budget approval doc. I think it's $40,000, so I think we would need to remove revenue from the solid waste fund of $40,000. So, when we come to the approval of the budget resolution, we'll have that dollar amount ready.
Okay, thank you, city manager. Alderman Ruth Simmons?
I just wanted to add that both of those areas, you seem to have identified the problem areas that outreach could have been simple, and it's overdue. So, they actually both happen to be in the 5th Ward. That's the east side and the west side of the 5th Ward. You're welcome, and I'm asking that the appropriate staff come to our ward meetings and give proper education on that.
Sure. We'd like to do that.
All right, thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Yes, as we look into this issue in a more complete way, I would really like to have a report on the value of recycling, what's going on today in the market and the economy. I've heard some reports lately on business channels that recycling just is a drag in terms of trying to generate any kind of dollars from even clean recycle items. So, but I'd like to know what's going on.
And yes, and as the city manager indicated, having Groot here to explain that, they'd be the better authority to explain it.
Right, and would you ask them to do that? And then also to explain what happens when our stuff gets to the, whatever you, what is the location? What is, is it a transfer station where, do they bundle it? They don't, what do they do with it?
We transport it out to the Groot Recycling Center, and then they handle it from there.
Okay, yeah.
So...
They don't bail it? I mean, at one time...
They sort it first, and they then distribute everything into the proper thing to try to recycle.
See, that's, I want to know what the end result is there. What's the value of doing that?
Right.
Does it eventually go to the landfills where our garbage is going, some of it?
Well, the contaminate stuff does go to the landfill. But one of the reasons Chicago is still profitable in recycling is that there is a glass company in Chicago that will take recycling glass. There's lots of communities in the United States where they don't even collect glass anymore because they don't, they don't have a, they can't resell it to anybody. So, in the Chicagoland area, at least, there's that resource that will take the used glass and make more glass.
Thank you, Mr. Stoneback. All right, thank you, everybody, for that discussion. City manager, can we talk about victim services?
Sure. Director Thomas Smith is here, and Avanda, perhaps the, maybe the best course would be to back up a little bit and talk about the work that has been done over the last year since the staff moved to the Health Department. Also, to talk a little bit about our ability to staff all the positions as well as what we have done to deal with victims of sexual assaults and handle that, so...
Sure. Good evening, Avanda Thomas Smith, Director Health and Human Services. As Wally mentioned, the victim services was transitioned over to Health and Human Services in January. And at that time, we were recruiting to fill the two part-time positions, and we were not successful in getting good candidates to fill those two part-time positions. And so, we reposted the two part-time positions into a full-time position and advertised and recruited for... and recruited for that as well, and did not get an adequate candidate pool. We had community members, along with myself and staff, to interview for that position, and just was not successful in filling that vacancy. And so the Director of Domestic Violence Services from the YWCA was a panel participant, and at that time, shared our dilemma with Karen Singer, the CEO and President of the YWCA. Also simultaneously, the chief reached back out to me, alerting me that 24-hour, seven, 24-hour, seven days a week coverage needed to be restored, because the chaplains who were providing that 24-hour service really could not provide, they felt the adequate support that victims needed. And so with the dilemma of the police department feeling the 24-hour, seven, 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 seven-day-a-week coverage was not adequate, we were still trying to recruit and fill the position. Karen Singer reached out to me and said that they have been providing domestic violence services in the community since 1985, and have always felt that it was a duplication of services. They have been the experts in this area in the North Shore. They do currently have, and I'm tapping my phone because Karen Singer and her staff could not be here tonight, but they have sent me talking points to share with you, as they were here, attempting to share with you on our last, our last budget meeting. But she wanted you to know that they are considered the experts in this area, that they've always felt that it was a duplication of services, that they do have a great track record, and they have the infrastructure to provide the service at a far less cost than what we're paying at this time. Karen seems to feel that she can do the same service that she's doing in her organization now for half of what we're paying. And there's a myth in the community that she's heard repeatedly that they don't service men, and currently 10% of their patient or client population are men. So they do service anyone that comes to their doors. They do provide 24-hour crisis intervention. They do also provide court advocacy, and they've been doing court advocacy for about 18 years. And so because of our fiscal dilemma, it just made sense to investigate the possibility of the YWCA providing the same similar service. She was clear in stating that it's domestic violence, domestic battery and court advocacy, that the death notifications, they could not, they don't have the capacity to do that. And so I have offered our social workers and the Human Services Division of our department to provide that service in support of the police officers, to provide death notifications. And Deera and I have done that since the course of the victim services has been moved to January. We've experienced actually doing death notifications as recent as Friday, and they are also concerned that they would not be able to provide the mental health services. But as you know, we have a contractual relationship with Presence Behavioral Health. There has been a successful relationship for the past four years, and we want to make sure that we can continue to do that warm handoff to that service provider. So I would be responsible for overseeing the contractual relationship, to make sure that the YWCA could honor their investment in this endeavor, as I do with Presence Behavioral Health. So I am the department liaison to the staff at Presence Behavioral Health, the social worker in the library, and I would do that same commitment for the YWCA if this council so desires to go into a contractual relationship. Did I cover everything?
You did. Thank you.
Oh, sure.
So are you, are you supportive of this transition from Evanston doing this in-house to doing it through this service provider?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Do you think the quality of the work that can be performed by the service provider is equal to what we provide in-house?
I think from what I've learned following their organization, they are the go-to provider in the North Shore area. They also provide the 40-hour domestic violence training that's required by each individual that provides this service. They are one of the largest service providers providing the training. And I do really support their trauma-informed lens, which means not only do they, are they intentional about interrupting the violence, but they also do perpetrator training. So they also not only support the victim, but also try to interrupt the actual inception of violence through their perpetrator Training Academy. And so because they have such a comprehensive look at the cycle of violence, I absolutely support this organization providing the service.
And what is the, and I don't know if this, if you know this, Ms. Thomas, or Mr. City Manager, the cost savings for the city by transitioning this is $258,000, is that what I'm saying?
So it's about $100,000?
Correct.
$100,000, okay. Okay, we got a few lights here. Alderman Rainey?
Well, what I just heard was just a chaotic mix of running here, running there, who do I call, where do I call, what do I do now? First of all, I really don't want to hear from Ivana on this matter. I, she knows how much I respect her work, but this isn't her problem. This is a police department-located issue, and that's who we should be hearing from. We're about to get a new chief, any day now, that'll be announced that we, we're going to hire a new chief. The new chief will be on the job, I am certain, by January 1. I proposed to my colleagues that we retain the victim services in the police department, return them there. I don't know where the heck they are. They're either here or there-
They're still located in the police department.
Well, no, they're not. That's, that's not, they're not, they're not, that's not where they're housed morning, noon, and night, unless that just happened. Anyway, so there's, you're supervising them, but they're there. There's, there is all sorts of chaos created by this, by this situation. Anyway, I'm proposing that we leave the, keep the victim advocates in the police department. Let the new chief make these decisions, and just as we're doing with Kevin Brown and the Youth and Adult Services, Young Adult Services, let's get a report by June 2019. Is this a valuable service, and are we handling it efficiently, and is it productive in the police department? If not, let's say right now, if not June 19, when we get that, when we get that, the results of that observation by the chief and his people, they will know now that in June, if this is not working, they will be let go. But for now, with a new chief coming on, this should not be happening. This should not be happening. So I'm going to suggest, if nothing else, we put in two full-time salaries for six months in our budget, and let people have the, you know, their service. It's so important. We heard tonight from at least one person who's been served by them. I went to court for one solid year, where an advocate was in that courtroom with a family whose, whose brother, his brother, had been beaten to death on Howard Street. And it meant more to them than anything. And I do not, I mean, Karen Singer's fabulous. She does a great job, but that's what she does. She does a great job where she is. This will be a disaster with her people working on this.
All right.
And, and it's too fragmented, and it's going to create more chaos than we have right now.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fleming, then Alderman Fisk?
My concern is that, you know, we moved this, we had a very long discussion, you know, you were, you participated as much, and you were inherited in this last year, but we had a very long discussion last year. We said it's going to be the same, we're going to have coverage, nothing's going to change, and it's, you know, as you said, it's not, it's not all been the same. We haven't been able to find the two extra workers. Your staff has had to step in and do some things that they weren't doing before. You know, there's been transition of where they're located, and the files, and whatever else. So it hasn't been the same. And so now to move it again, I think it's very disruptive. I mean, I know we've only heard from one lady who gave a personal testimony, but imagine, she's just now starting court. We're going to move it somewhere else. She's going to get a new person into this three-year court battle, who's going to have to come, get caught up to speed, and, and try to support her. And not to say that that can't happen, but I'm, I'm concerned, you know, about that type of transition. I'm also concerned that, I know you mentioned you would continue to do death notifications. They would do domestic violence. I'm thinking of people who have sexual assault and other things that fall not in those two categories. Who's going to take care of that? And that's not the time where we need to have confusion, when someone is dealing with something very traumatic with the police, to get handed off to someone, and then maybe figure out they're not in the right space. It's, it's very traumatic to someone. And so I have a lot of concern with transitioning this under the guise that it's all going to be the same, because it's not going to be the same. And I, and I appreciate that you, you know, have tried to work with it. I guess I'm a little bit confused as well. I know I didn't ask the representative from the Y questions last week, but when we had this conversation last year, Karen Singer was very involved, and I seem to remember her saying, you know, she wasn't willing to jump in. I know we weren't talking about contracting, but, but I did not hear from her that we can do this, we can do it for cheaper, this is what we do every day. And so now that the conversation has moved to contract, the, the idea that they can do this, they do it all the time, it's a duplication of services, is, I'm a little puzzled by that, because that's not what I heard last year during all the conversations. So I would support Alderman Rainey in leaving this. We do have a lot of changes happen at the police force. Maybe this, you know, new chief has experience that we don't know about, that he can, or she can enlighten us as to what they think needs to happen. But, you know, and I think this, as I told the city manager when we met before, this is part of the frustration that we heard in the community around youth and young adult. We're saying it's going to be the same, it's going to be the same, we're just going to move people. And we see now from this year-long program that, that doesn't always transition well, no matter what our best intentions are. So I would also support keeping the same people in place, put them in with Kimberly Richardson's assessment, have the new police chief work on it, and, and figure out where that leaves us in the summer.
All right, thank you, Alderman Fleming. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you. I agree that this is, that this is complicated. I have a huge amount of respect for Karen Singer. She's been incredibly helpful with cases in my ward, and I just don't think there's anyone better or more experienced. So she would cover, the YWCA would cover sexual assault?
Sexual assault right now is being covered by Northwest CASA, who is a sexual assault provider in the community that has been providing it since I inherited the victim services in January.
Okay. And so she would be doing, then, domestic violence?
Correct.
And only, only domestic violence?
Correct.
Okay, I, I feel a little bit uncomfortable about the presence part of it. Can you explain that a little bit more, about what Presence would be doing?
So Presence for the-
And, and who, who it would be, and is there a representative here tonight?
No, they're not here tonight, but we've had a contractual relationship. We're going into year five, where if someone were suspected to have a mental health issue, and they encountered law enforcement, that they would be referred to Presence for crisis intervention and short or long-term case management. Some of those same clients are outreach by the social worker at the library. She's physically housed at the library. She reaches out to the resident to try to engage a relationship. Some of my staff have encountered some of the same clients, and so they get into services if they're out of care and don't have a primary care provider through Presence. And that's been going on for four years now.
Okay.
It's actually grown. We started out by a half-time person, and now we're up to two full-time social workers and a half that are paid by Presence and employed by Presence Behavioral Health, but the referrals come through the city.
Okay, so can you tell me exactly what is going to change from the victim services, victim advocates that we had previously in the police department? Exactly what's going to change?
That if there is an incident that occurs that our law enforcement are engaged with, the victim would be referred to the YWCA instead of referred to our victim advocates.
Okay, so the, the victim advocates used to show up. Is someone from the YWCA going to actually show up?
Well, sometimes the advocates do show up, and sometimes they connect with the victim, depending on the situation. It's all individual. Karen has said, and she said this last year, that that is not current industry standard, that a person physically show up in the presence of law enforcement.
Okay.
That actually it's not evidence-based, but they would reach out to the victim and ensure that they had the supportive services that they are in need of. And they do that now with victims that don't engage with our police department. They do that service right now. And I think the concern was, they go to court with their advocates. I've only been to court maybe twice, and I, and our advocates are present, as well as the YWCA's advocates are present.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Breathway?
Just a couple of follow-up questions. Thank you so much for your presentation, Director. So you talked a little bit about the 24-hour coverage, and that has me a bit concerned. And currently, we are not providing that 24-hour coverage, is what you mentioned.
So the advocates right now, the full-time advocates, do not provide after-hour coverage. In the past, this, since January, when there's been a need for an advocate after hours, sometimes the police have engaged the chaplain, and the advocates follow up the next day, because they get the referrals the next morning.
Right.
Because they've gone from a staff of five previously in the police department, down to a staff of two, realistically, we did not have the capacity to do 24/7 hour coverage.
Right.
But the need is still there.
And that was a, a good call out, because my understanding of our police chaplain is that they're actually there for our police support and support of our officers, not that, and I have no idea, but I'm going to make an assumption-
So what I know, and I know the chief is here, he may be able to explain it better than I, but they provide support to the victims, but it's really a different support than the advocate would provide.
Right, right.
So what I know is that the chaplains provide, if asked, some spiritual support, but in terms of how do I move a body, and how do I get a funeral director, that would be more of the advocate's work. So it's a different level of support.
Okay, so I don't want to mix those, I'm clear on that. That's-
Okay.
I don't need to argue that, but, and so the other point that you brought up is the difficulty in filling the positions. So we're not covering 24 hours, and we're down. And I remember going through the exercise of how many full-time versus part-time, so those positions have remained vacant for the past, what?
We have not filled, initially, it started out two part-time positions. We did not get good candidates for that, and I thought it was because it was part-time without benefits. I thought it would be more attractive, so I negotiated to take the two part-time positions and make them an FTE with benefits to be more attractive. And right when we were going to make an offer this last time, we had a hiring freeze.
One of the things that, and I spoke to Karen also, because I had a bunch of concerns and, and questions, and myself, Wally, I can't remember if Director Hemingway was here at the time, but the YWCA, just as a reminder, two years ago, took on a huge, which I thought was, was a great initiative, and I was present with about 200 men in a room that they invited-
The perpetrator training?
Yeah, yeah. And, and it was geared towards helping men understand the domestic violence, and, and really having us take responsibility for it as well. It was extremely eye-opening to all of us. Oh, yeah, you all were, you all were there. And it sort of forced, and I'll speak for myself, and maybe others will share their own stories, but really do more than just listening. I find myself in some situations, I listen, but I don't really have the tools to advocate. And, and it was through that two-hour Denny meeting, and then there were several community meetings that I attended with, you know, city manager was present, and some other folks, that maybe excites is not the good word to use right now, this hour, but I was encouraged by the fact that they're actually, not only are they dealing with the women, they've been doing that historically, but adding this new dimension of also supporting and challenging and dealing with the men as, as well.
Absolutely. And that's the unknown area that people don't realize, that 10% of their population have always been men.
Right.
Always.
Right.
It's not a new concept, and they've always been providing perpetrator training. They're trying to raise a deeper awareness of that domestic battery is not just the victim. It's, it's a complex system-
Right.
-that we all need to be aware of.
Yeah, and, and, you know, they've even stepped, taken it a step further, that they're starting to teach sessions in council within the high school as well.
Yes.
And, and a very targeted approach. So when I think of all the things involved with this contract- So when I think of all the things involved with this contract, that is the one factor that helps me to look at it in a different way and that for once, you're going to have a very balanced approach, not only supporting the women, being able to provide that 24-hour coverage. I also spoke to Karen and she mentioned that her staff provides folks who speak multi-language as well.
Yes.
But for me, the part that I'm really paying attention to is targeting those who are actually causing the harm to the women, and that's the men. So I will be supportive.
Or vice versa.
Or vice versa. Or vice versa.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. City Manager Bob Kuwitz and then Alderman Rainey.
Some of the issues have just been recently covered, but I think I would take the council back to the discussion we had a year ago. And I think that some of the things that Director Thomas Smith has said are the reasons that we decided to make the changes, that we have additional very talented people within our Health and Human Services Department. They have been able to be folded in to help provide some of the services that are needed. And I think that was the original thought, is how do we leverage the expertise we currently have on staff to do that? We've had some challenges in hiring. I mean, that's an unfortunate thing. I think we continue to look at the positions, you know, to make sure that the job descriptions meet our needs but are also attractive to folks that are looking for a job. But at the same time, we've had the support of Andere Perkins and her staff who also have similar training to the current victim advocates to leverage those skills. Those skills don't exist really anywhere in the police department. And one of the challenges of having this service in the police department has been there really hasn't been a bench because the police officers come with different skills and abilities. So I think however the council lands on this, you know, the initial thought that we had a year ago, I think is still very strong. And that is, let's leverage all of the skilled staff that we have and use them in ways that makes sense to best serve the community. And I again want to compliment Avanda and her staff for really taking up that challenge this year and really making the most of this, given all of the particular circumstances that have been described tonight.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey, then Alderman Ravel.
It is very wrong to in any way imply that there is anything negative here about Director Thomas or the YWCA. The YWCA plays a certain role in this community. They are given lots of money to provide grants, to provide those kinds of things that Alderman Braithwaite is talking about. And those kinds of things should be offered more and made more known to the community. However, however, we are making these changes once again on the backs of the most vulnerable. When I think about using Presence St. Francis Hospital, they're already being used. For the people who need those services, St. Francis Presence is there serving them. That's why we paid them, started with this payment with the social worker and the 24-hour hotline several years ago. That's why we do that. It's my understanding that in addition to domestic violence calls, there were 600 other call-outs so far this year that the YWCA is not going to be able to handle. The YWCA should always be there for us and for our victim advocates. They're not something new or something that can take over everything. They're an accessory part of this whole issue. Our victim advocates are better because of them in some cases. The sexual assault group, I think if we use them some extent now, I guess we should continue using them, but we need these advocates local here. And the reason they can't go out in some cases is they don't get called. You know that and I know that. I know that very specifically from victims who have called me. And I'm not trained as a victim advocate. I try to help them and then I hook them up with our victim advocates. There is... I will be so disappointed in this council if we don't give our new chief of police, whoever that's going to be. I know there must have been some issue with this chief of police and this service, but I think this new chief of police ought to be given an opportunity here to tell us one way or another, should we keep victim advocates that we are known for, by the way? I mean, there's a history here. Should we keep them or should we not? Let's make a final decision in June, get rid of this service, or let's keep it and enhance it. One or the other. But let's not go through this now. This is just the wrong time to be doing this again. And, you know, if they're back at the police department, God bless, they need to be there. There should be a bench, quote unquote, there for them. There should be an office there. That's where everything emanates from. And I certainly hope you all agree to put in two full salaries for six months.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Ravel and then Alderman Fisk.
One other question. When... You said we had five advocates. Was that around then?
Yeah, so when I got the position control initially, when we started talking about this last year, there were... We still have the youth advocate, she's in Parks and Rec. At the time, the youth advocate, she's in Parks and...
Okay, but not for criminal issues and things?
She works with the juvenile. She works with the juvenile population. And at the time, when the budget was being discussed, there was another full-time employee that left. And there was a manager that left in July before the budget process started. So there were five employees that were listed. Again, there's two full-time victim advocates in Health and Human Services, but they have always physically been in the police department. And then there's a part-time youth advocate that has moved to Parks and Rec physically here.
Thank you. Alderman Ravel?
Well, I certainly share my colleagues' admiration and appreciation for the YWCA and certainly also for Director Thomas Smith in really providing amazing services to people who really are needing them. I guess we've heard a lot about how we would meet the needs of domestic violence victims, sexual assault victims, provide mental health services, and I guess the death notifications. But what about a straight violence? I mean, Alderman Rainey mentioned someone who was beaten to death. I mean, so when we have something, a violent situation that's not domestic, not related, who would... Who takes care of that?
So currently, some of the crime against person that has created trauma where people are just not feeling safe or stable, the advocates currently work with the victims through the police department. There's an opportunity that I currently have staff that have the same expertise that we can leverage. So I would work with the new police chief to make sure that people who are traumatized but don't fall into those categories neatly would have some support from the social workers that are in Health and Human Services. We want to make sure that no one falls through the cracks and so we would work very closely, continually with our police department to assure that that support is given. Because again, that falls out of the categories that the Y would cover, that Presence would cover, but maybe someone is still traumatized and needing additional support. So we would make sure that that happens, working with our police department.
So it sounds as though even with a victim advocate program based in the police department, we still need these other partners. I mean, we still need Presence for the mental health services and the YWCA is already providing wonderful support to domestic violence victims.
Yeah, in the past, the previous manager of the victim services was responsible for making sure those referrals got to the appropriate person, whether it was an advocate, a nonprofit, Presence. That was her responsibility to make sure all the referrals that came in through law enforcement got to where they needed. Some of the wellbeing checks were sent to Audrey Thompson. Some of the seniors that officers went to visit, they would make a referral and that manager was responsible to make sure that referral got to Audrey Thompson, got to the Health Department, got to Presence, or the victim advocates. That was her role.
Okay. And right now, your department is providing that managerial role?
Yes, yes.
And then with this new proposal, who would...
We would still assure that all of the referrals that come into the police department got to the appropriate place.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Ravel. Alderman Fisk?
Thanks, Avanda. So that would be a person then?
Yes.
In your department?
That would be Andere Perkins.
All right, okay. I had a question for the chief. Could you just tell me a little bit about the chaplains? I mean, my understanding is that the chaplains are there, as Alderman Braithwaite said, to serve the officers themselves and not outreach to the public?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, members of the dais. The chaplains program was started with the intent of ministry to the officers and employees of the police department. When we began this discussion over a year ago, it was my... It was my plan to use the chaplains as a stopgap measure until the staffing under Director Thomas Smith had been re-upped. Unfortunately, as was just covered recently, that has kind... That plan eroded over time and we have used the chaplains over this last year to help us with the death notifications. And one of the things that is extremely difficult in these matters is time. We need a tool that works 24/7, 7-day... I mean, we can't, you know, you know, the death notification guys are off, we'll see you next Wednesday. That doesn't work. And so depending on the outcome of this evening's discussions, we will need to tool up a number of police officers to become proficient in these death notifications who are able to do it in a timely manner so the family and loved ones can begin to start what they need to do and go forward. The situation we have with the chaplains is, we started off with a crew of six and frankly, if I were a chaplain in that group, I would be considered the young guy in the group. So, and so now we've... I've burnt that bridge, I've burnt them up. Their capacity has been tapped. And so we need to evolve to a system where that responsibility is taken over by police officers. And as I said, I think it was last week or the week before, not generally a skill set we have, generally not a skill set, especially in this department. In the other agencies I've worked for, it was the responsibility of the beat officers and supervisors to deliver this information. With our 30-year history of victim services, that's not in our... We don't do that. And so now we're going to have to train officers up to do that so we have the ability to do this in a timely manner, 24/7. As Director Thomas Smith and I have talked, one of the key issues is response time for them to be able to deliver the service. And so as we go forward, I have to deal with that delayed response time, which is not always really realistic. The family and loved ones need to know as soon as practically possible.
Right. Thank you, Chief. So Director, that's not a service that you could provide at 24/7 service?
We could provide it, but as the chief mentioned, his concern was response time. Right now, the response time is within an hour. And for the staff that would be available to respond to a death notification, it would take that full hour for them to be physically present to do a death notification. And so again, if the police officers needed someone sooner, it would be a delay. Because of where the proximity of where my current staff live, the earliest that a staff person could be available would be a half an hour, 45 minutes. And for the police department, that might be a delay for them.
Okay.
Right?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. And just like last year, I'm still struggling with some of my decision process on this. But in considering this, this is... It's really a budget question and it's... To me, it's reflecting our intentions. It's not... I don't expect you to have all of the parameters of the plan worked out. So we're talking about what resources, money-wise, you're going to have available. And when I think about that, the way I look at this is, we're going to look at what services are going to be available and we want to make sure that they're being successfully delivered and we want to make sure that you have the capacity to provide those. I trust that you are going to work well with the new chief and...
Absolutely.
And come up with, you know, firm up the plans. What I hear and what you've presented and talked about is you kind of, you know, like my football metaphor, like we're on the 10-yard line and we're close. So I think I have a better understanding from both the conversation, your information, and also hearing from the public. These are very, very important services, but more than just being important, they're extremely personal. So in every situation, they are full of variables and context that any given one person really can't address. So my inclination, you know, in looking at the numbers, again, is not to expect you to have all of the plan and the program worked out tonight, but looking at what's up there, we do have the vacant position vacant. I would like to leave that vacant, but leave that... Leave the money for the YW program in there and the other two positions in the budget, but with the understanding that this is planning budget. So, you know, you're not going to go shopping and spend too much money. But my hope is if we do that, you're going to have the room you need to come back to us and get us to the goal line and have all of those three points fleshed out and in a cohesive plan for the delivery of the services with the menu of the services. Does that make sense?
I'm not sure I understand.
Okay. Well, yeah.
I know I don't understand.
You know, we've got a lot of pieces to this puzzle. We have domestic violence, we have sexual assault, we have people going to court, we have people who are the victims of violence, we have lots of different things, death notifications. Okay, there's our menu of services. I don't think I have a clear enough picture on how those services are going to be delivered. You've given a general outline of what you need to do that. And I just want to budget for an adequate level of funding to make sure that you can come back to us with how you can do that. And I'm suggesting to come up with that range, that we leave the 150 in there and that we take one of the three positions out and just leave two positions for now.
Wait, so you're only eliminating one?
Only eliminating one position. And I think we've still got... Does that still leave us balanced?
No.
Oh, I asked that.
I thought you were saying that if we took one position out and went with the contract, that would be balanced.
If we took one position out?
If we took one position out and went with the contract, the staff tells me that that's close. Is that still correct?
Are you saying do both?
Well, he's saying do both.
Okay.
No, I'm saying they have two people stay.
Right. And so that would...
And do the contract, but that's not going to work.
No.
No.
No, because...
It would be more.
Well, I mean, if you want to add resources, then that would do that.
Well, I think what I'm hearing is that we need to add resources. The two individuals doing the job now, we don't have capacity.
Correct.
So we don't have capacity. But I'm concerned that if we take the two positions away entirely right now and replace it with the contract, that we're going to have a gap.
In what capacity?
That you see?
Death notifications, other forms of violence.
We will be providing that.
I understand that, but I want to see it. I believe you, okay? And what I don't want to do is, in a budget short, change your capacity.
Okay.
So, you know, that's what I'm thinking. If it's, you know, I was doing rough math, if we hadn't have taken the $40,000 out, I think maybe... But that's my inclination, is for now, to Alderman Rainey's point, leave those positions where they are and then have you work with the new chief and, you know, give us a clear and, you know, clear plan on how the services are going to be delivered. Like literally, who's going to do what? And then who's going to kind of supervise? Because I don't feel super comfortable that, you know, Alderman Rainey says it's chaotic. I don't think it's going to be chaotic, but I don't want it to be confusing to people who are, you know, experiencing, you know, the worst moment of their lives.
What are you doing about the contract?
I don't want to sign the contract, I just want to leave money available in that line item for some sort of additional services.
Yes?
I got a hybrid plan. But it's not really, I want to leave you enough money to do what you need to do. That's all I'm saying. However that looks. So I want you to, I know you're advocating for this.
Yeah.
But would you be better able to do it if you had maybe another position that was retained?
But she had the positions that she couldn't fill, Alderman Wilson.
No, we have two people that are working there right now.
But you have a third.
Vacant.
Yeah, definitely cut the third, for sure cut the one that's vacant.
Then I would not have capacity to do the service.
No, I, you don't
If you're saying cut the vacancy
Cut the vacancy and do the contract.
Keep the vacancy.
All right. You're eliminating three people, right? Maybe I'm just losing my mind or something, or I've been doing this too long. The proposal calls for elimination of three positions. I'm saying eliminate one instead of three.
So it'd be two full-time advocates and do the contractual relationship with the Y?
Budget for that. I'm not saying in the end actually do that, I just want to budget that money.
But then we would be back to where we are right now, because we do have currently two full-time advocates right now.
Yeah.
And we can't provide the 24-hour coverage.
That's why we should have one, two and a half.
And the YW can.
Mr. Mayor.
But it's not in either or. I'm just saying, I want to put enough money in here that you can do what you need to do to deliver all the services, however that looks. So if you think you can do it all with just the Y, then we can just vote on that. That's okay, if you really feel confident about that.
Okay. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the discussion this evening. What I'd like to propose is that we keep the two positions, current filled positions, within the Department of Health and Human Services, that we provide funding for six months of contract with the YWCA, and that we ask Ms. Thomas Smith to come back to the council once the new police chief is in place. April 1st, April 15th, something like that, with a update, and if there's additional dollars that are required, then to keep the contract a full, moving forward, if we would then make the decision to eliminate the positions at that point, we could do that. So that would cost, so the third position's $81,000, that's more or less half of 150. So if we were to leave that as is, and take the 100, Kate's going to make this all pretty for me.
But point of clarification, City Manager, 80% of the volume of work is domestic violence. So are you saying that the advocates would continue to do domestic violence as the Y does domestic violence?
I think that we would ask you to, we would give you the money for six months of a contract for the YW to sort through that, perhaps, you know, don't enter into the, talk further with the YW. We still need to come up with plans for the notifications, I think as Chief Eddington has said. Perhaps we look further at having officers do that, there's some training involved, so there'll be some dollars required for that. But I think that if we keep the advocates, free up some money for a contract, let you continue to talk further with the YW, that this is a six-month solution, that then I think goes back to Alderman Rainey's original point, that it helps line up with the larger work that we're doing moving forward, that that may make sense. We're then $100,000 to the less, that would take fund balance down to about $140,000. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if you believe that we are finished with the budget at this point, I think then that the $140,000 is sufficient to allow us to move forward.
I have a question.
Okay, we got a couple people late. Alderman Rainey, then Alderman Fleming.
First of all, the YWCA is always already present in our community. They've received an enormous grant recently. They are there to serve us. That's their mission. We need the two victim advocates and a third, because I don't believe anybody else is going to be able to fill in and do the overnight work if they're not going to be called to do it. Presence is already there. This service does not belong in the Health Department. I want the City Manager to promise to have this conversation with the new chief of police. This does not belong in the Health Department. The Health Department needs to be doing, you know, talking to people about vaccines and, you know, transmitted diseases and food safety. I don't want them administering police issues, things that have to do with police records and that kind of thing. I just don't think it's their job. And there has been nothing but, think about it. The chief just pointed out, 30 years we've had a victim assistance program in the Police Department. We've never, in my years, we've never had any problems until we moved it to the Health Department. Let's put it back where it belongs and have the conversation you're talking about with the Police Department. That's
And Alderman Rainey, members of the council, you know, we're happy to do that with the new chief. You know, the resources, we have a Health and Human Services Department, and so we have, Yvonda, is it six, eight staff members in the Human Services portion?
Five.
It's getting late, five, five. And these are, two of them are social workers?
All three.
All three of them are social workers?
All four, I'm sorry, all four are social workers.
So we are already in the Human Services business. Part of that is because we took over the township, and part of it is because after we took over the township, we saw that there was a great need for these kind of services. Many of the victims of crime are in need of these services. And I think what Director Thomas Smith and her staff have been able to do is show how this does make sense. But it has been a transition, it has been something different. Again, I think that if you would like us to continue with the two positions, they would remain in the Health Department, we would have money available for contract services, we would talk further with the new chief of police, and commit to come back to you in the spring with an update.
I said June, like you're going to do with the youth and young adults, you're going to have a report out in June. I don't want to tell people we're going to keep them for three months. I mean, that's cruel.
Then we can, then, again, we'll need a moment just to make sure we got all the numbers straight. But, you know, we can do this for six months, leave the positions in the Health Department, try to have some flexibility for contract dollars, work with the new chief, and then come back as part of that larger review in six months. So I think if we took those positions and only budgeted the two staff positions for six months, that should do it, as far as helping us balance this a little bit closer. So Kate, I'll let you do the numbers.
But they have to be given the opportunity to do their job. It's not just enough
And Alderman Rainey, members of the council, they have been. They have been given the opportunity to do their job, but they've been asked to do their job a little differently. And I think it is our responsibility as good managers, certainly Director Thomas Smith and Ms. Perkins have done that. And so we just need to continue to work, we need to have, it's a team effort. Serving this community is a team effort. We have many people in need. We've spent the last five weeks talking about people in need in this community, and we all as a team need to do our best with the resources allocated to serve this community the best we can.
Thank you. Alderman Fleming, and then Alderman Win.
Real quick, so are we going to have the Y contract back before it's signed and committed to? Okay. And so I guess I would like to have more information. So if someone's in the hospital, or whatever's happened to this person who needs services, make sure the police know who to call, the hospital knows, because now it sounds like you're calling the Y for domestic violence, you're calling, you know, I'm Director Thomas Smith, I'm imagining if it's midnight, you know, I think we just want to be really clear, you know, for our community members, so they know who to call, you know, obviously with the police in the transition there. Because now if we have two different vendors, people in a time of crisis need to understand, you know, who's going to be called on their behalf, as do our staff, as do, you know, as does the city. And so I have grave concerns about that. I will just reiterate my concerns, that we moved this last year and thought it was going to be all the same, and it hasn't been the same, and now we're doing this kind of half year move to it, or change to it, or whatever we're doing. And so I'm very concerned that during a time of crisis, you know, if we are not clear with our staff and our police and fire and everyone else, then the people who really need us are going to be even more frustrated, because the wrong department's going to be called, or it's going to be 45 minutes, or, you know, whatever the hangup is going to be, because this is not, you know, my opinion, fully fleshed out, nor fully staffed.
Thank you. Alderman Win, and Alderman Fisk?
I think that, I think that the City Manager has proposed a very good compromise for now. We are holding on to two victim advocates, but we are using the Y, the YW, which Director Thomas Smith is absolutely right, they are the experts in this, and they have been for a long time. I think it's really critical that we do that. Director Thomas Smith is the point person, who has been, correcting me if I'm wrong, you have been directing all of these services to the various places that that needs to go this past year. We've had this relationship with Presence for five years, and that's been working fine. How long have we had the relationship with CASA?
A year.
A year?
Sisterhood.
Okay. And they are another superb organization that specializes in sexual violence. I think that we should move forward, and we'll revisit this at six months, and we'll figure out whether this is working correctly, or what are the changes that we need to make. But I do think it's essential that we use the YW for their expertise, and that we start having them do that. You know, and Alderman Rainey, I know you're saying they are there for us, but they are providing capacity. Alderman, excuse me, Director Thomas Smith just told us 80% of these victim, this type of victim services is domestic violence. That's, they're a nationally recognized expert right here in our community, that we should, who are ready to step up and help us. So I think we should move forward. I think this is a very good compromise. This allows us time to gather the information that we need to start working with the YW. And my understanding from the chief is that the death notifications will now be done by the Police Department, if, that your services are not available within, in less than an hour. Is that correct?
That is correct. And that's the current call-out expectation now, that there will be a response within an hour.
Yes, and I think that's appropriate. I think we're ready to move forward with this budget.
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Alderman Win and support the City Manager's position. Director, you are the point person. I don't want to leave any question about that out in the community, any confusion about that in the community. You are our point person.
So I'm the point person for the department, the actual calls come into Indira Perkins, the supervisor.
Right, but there's not going to be any confusion.
We can try our best, and we've tried, but the reality is, it's the police that actually reach out to us.
Yeah.
It's the, we get the call from the Police Department, not from community members.
Right.
And that's been consistent since January. It's been Indira Perkins.
Right. But I didn't want to leave any doubt in the community that's either watching on TV or here this evening, that there's going to be confusion as part of this process. It will work out. You're professionals, and I have every faith in you.
Our goal is to make sure that the community is served. And we will tweak it and try to fix it, to make sure that that happens. I work very closely with the Police Department now, that will continue.
Okay. Okay, so unless there's, thank you very much, Director Thomas. Unless there's any more discussion about the general budget, what I propose now is that we go back to the beginning of the agenda, and we start taking these items that are all for action. Can, and I guess I have a question of the city attorney. Do we have to, can I take this like a consent agenda, or do I need to do a roll call vote on every single one?
What?
They're all money-related.
I think you should do each one.
Okay, each one separately. Okay, so we're going to do lots of, we're going to do lots of, lots of votes, and we'll go through. All right, so item number two, Resolution 82-R-18, general obligation debt property tax abatement. Staff recommends the adoption of this resolution for general obligation bonds, Series 2010B.
Move approval.
Any discussion? Seeing none, City Clerk can take the roll.
Yes, I just want to note ahead my light on relating to the budget. Alderman Win?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
No.
Alderman Sufferton?
No.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Which one do we vote on?
Two.
Number two.
I'm Alderman Fisk.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
All right. Resolution 82-R-18 passes the City Council on a seven to two vote. Alderman Rainey?
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. In the past, we have read these in a different way, so that we don't have to do every single one separately.
Why you just?
I believe it can be read as a consent agenda, as long as there isn't disagreement from anyone else on the dais.
So Alderman Rainey, how has it been done on the best side?
I'll tell you how it's been done. It's been done in this way. You say that you are moving approval of 15 tax abatements, and they cover, they cover from Resolution such and such a number to 2018D, which I think is the last one, my recollection is the last one. And then you mentioned that they, yeah, that's what you do, and the amount that it's abating. For example, the total 2018 abatement is $5,872,660. So you say, I move approval of Resolution 82R-18 through Resolution 96R-18. These are Series 210B to 2018D, general obligation bonds, and the total abatement is $5,872,660. Just say it.
Okay, and so, that was a motion, right?
Just 20 minutes, huh?
That was a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second that.
Well, if you don't want to vote for one, you can say, pull it off.
Okay, Alderman.
Quick.
Well, if we're going to have no votes, just do them one at a time, because like, otherwise we're just wasting our time trying to do this. So if there's no, let's just do them one at a time then.
All right, we get, there are going to be no votes? We've had, we just had one.
All right, so just do them one at a
All right, Alderman Rainey, can you take, I liked your idea, Alderman Rainey, but
It's been done every year for 30
You can do her idea, I can vote no. I'm fine with that.
On all of them?
On all of them? These are abatements.
I thought we were doing 17?
We're doing one through 16.
Number two?
We just did one through, I thought we just did one through 16, sorry. I thought that, oh gosh, oh gosh, yes, please do them all together. I thought we just did one through 16.
Two through 16, two through 16.
Yeah, I thought he did it all already.
No, he just did two.
Sorry.
You want to do it over?
Mayor Hagerty, if past practices indicated that you lumped the tax abatement resolutions together as one motion, that is reasonable. You can proceed that way.
Okay, okay, fine. So Alderman Rainey, just lump them all together, put a motion forward, Alderman Wilson seconded it, okay? This is for all the tax abatements up through 15, up through six
96R-18.
Yeah, item 16. Okay, City Clerk can take the roll on that.
I'm sorry.
Now it's taking longer than
Because I do this.
Alderman Win?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
No.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Okay. So items three through 16 pass the Evanston City Council on a seven to two vote, with Alderman Rue Simmons and Alderman Sufferton voting no.
And Fleming, a seven to
Excuse me, Alderman Fleming voted yes, seven to. Okay. Okay, now we are on to item 17, Alderman Rainey, have these been taken one by one, then the tax levies?
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
Okay, then as a senior Alderman, could you take us through each of these?
Thank you so much. Item 17 is Ordinance 123018, the City of Evanston, 2018 tax levy. I'm going to read the whole thing here, because I think that's important. This This levy's the annual property tax for general fund operations, Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, the Police and Fire Pension Funds, and the General Assistance Fund totaling The corresponding total for the 2017 levy was $30,101,220. I move approval, and then I'd like to speak to it.
Second.
Okay, open for discussion, Alderman Rainey, then Alderman Fleming.
Are the numbers, are not some of the numbers changed or we didn't change anything having to do with the levy?
Alderman Rainey, members of the council, no, the levies remain unchanged.
They remain unchanged, okay.
Alderman Fleming?
I had asked staff for a document, do we have that key, maybe, that just showed how much people should expect a C increase.
Okay.
Oh, gosh, I can't see. Oh, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. So I just like prepared a summary report about the two aspects. First, one is the, what would be the impact on the household from $100,000 to $1 million for the proposed increase of 4.4%? So this includes the Washington TIF recapture of $1 million and the 2% levy increase. And the bottom table, which shows that what would be the impact on the rate. So I started with the 2017 levy, which is the current levy we are using. Additional $64 million would be contributed by the Washington TIF to the general levy. And you see that the total estimated EAV would be around 2.8 million, and the tax levy with the $1 million recapture and 820,000 2% increase at $42.6 million, which would be around 1.52. Now again, to be conservative, I haven't included the general EAV increase. Like last year, we added $70 million to the EAV. If I put even around $50 million here, the rate would remain the same at 1.49 for the city portion of the tax levy. In terms of the households in the, if you just, yeah, for a market value property of like say $100,000, the net increase would be $19. You see in the column F, $19.69. And if you go around $400,000 market value of home, the increase would be $78.75.
Thank you, and then I have one more question, which maybe there wasn't time for a document for that. I wanted to show, well, actually never mind, I'll skip that one, thank you.
All right, seeing no more lights, city clerk, could you take the roll on item 17?
Alderman Wynn?
She'll be back momentarily.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
No.
Alderman Sufferton?
No.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
No.
And Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Okay. Item 17, Ordinance 123-0-18, City of Evanston 2018 Tax Levy passes the Evanston City Council on a six to three vote. All right, Alderman Rainey could take us through 18.
Ordinance 124018, the Evanston Library Fund 2018 Tax Levy. The library board has adopted a tax levy ordinance for the board's action on October 17, which levies the annual property tax for the Evanston Public Library in the amount of $6,887,755. This is for action.
Second. There is a second? Okay, all right, any discussion? Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, I just have a comment for this. So I spoke to Director Dan Zick lines already. I appreciate that they did not move forward with the remodel that we spoke of last year. I am going to make a strong public suggestion that once the Robert Crown Library is up and operating, that the library board move to close the branch on Chicago Avenue in Maine. I understand the lease is over in December, so we just have a couple of months overlap, but I'm gonna support this budget in hopes that they are going to move forward with that to decrease the spending at the library.
Thank you. All right, seeing no more lights, city clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
No.
Alderman Sufferton?
No.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
No.
Alderman Fleming?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
All right, Ordinance 124-0-18, Evanston Library Fund 2018 Tax Levy passes the Evanston City Council on a six to three vote. Alderman Rainey, item 19.
Item 19 is Ordinance 125018, Solid Waste Fund 2018 Tax Levy. Were requested to adopt the levy which levies the annual property tax for the solid waste fund in the amount of $836,735 for action.
All right, seeing no discussion, city clerk, could you take the roll on item 19?
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
No.
Alderman Sufferton?
No.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
All right, Ordinance 125-0-18, Solid Waste Fund 2018 Tax Levy, item number 19 passes the city council on a six to three vote.
Ordinance 126018 is a special service area number four, 2018 Tax Levy. Were asked to adopt the levy, which is the annual property tax for special service district number four in the amount of $535,714. Move approval.
Alderman Fleming?
I have a question. Can you just explain for the public, a special service area, I know it's a special tax for a certain geographic area, are people in that area necessary to improve the tax and their additional tax they take?
No, not each year, only when it's created. So when the district is created and it lives for 10 to 15 years, whatever it is deemed by the local government, that is when a full vote is taken by the stakeholders in that area.
Okay, and so can you explain what the increase is for this year?
The increase is actually because the TIF has been expired. The TIF expired, so our levy is increasing because the TIF normally takes money from the, as they say, and the equalized asset value of the district has gone up, so it is the reason where we have an increase.
All right, thank you.
But you didn't raise taxes.
No.
No. You just get more money.
Just get more money.
So there's a motion that was seconded. City clerk, could you take the roll on item number 20?
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
All right, Ordinance 126-0-18, Special Service Area Number Four, 2018 Tax Levy, item number 20 passes the city council on a nine to zero vote.
All right, Ordinance 127018 is Special Service Area Number Six, their 2018 Tax Levy. This levies the annual property tax for the area in the amount of $225,510. I move approval.
Seeing no lights, city clerk, could you take the roll?
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
No.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Item number 22?
Yes, Ordinance 117018, amending 71217, increasing the water meter charges and water rates. Staff recommends city council adopt this ordinance, which would increase the water meter charges and rates by 11%. I move approval. It should be noted that this is a neutral increase because the following is a sewer tax reduction.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Seeing no lights, city clerk, could you take the roll on number 22?
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
No.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
All right, item number 22, Ordinance 117-0-18, passes the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote. Alderman Rainey, item 19.
Item 19 is Ordinance 125018, Solid Waste Fund 2018 Tax Levy. Were requested to adopt the levy which levies the annual property tax for the solid waste fund in the amount of $836,735 for action.
All right, seeing no discussion, city clerk, could you take the roll on item 19?
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
No.
Alderman Sufferton?
No.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
All right, Ordinance 118-0-18, item number 23 passes the city council on a nine to zero vote.
Ordinance 128018, amends Title VIII, Chapter IV, Municipal Solid Waste and increasing the sanitation service charge. This modifies the charge for refuse collected in 95 and 65 gallon rollout carts by 15%. The collection of refuse from condominiums by 2.3%. And the charges for special pickups beginning January 1, 2019, with the exception of the $25 special pickup charge. Is that correct? That amendment?
Yes, as amended.
Move approval.
Mr. Mayor, for items going forward, these are text amendments, these are not, versus the tax levies and the tax payments, you can just do a voice vote.
Also, we can do a voice vote on these, okay? All right.
Now, most of them have money attached.
But this has some money attached to it.
They all have money attached.
Okay, so yeah, we got it down, we got a, we got a pattern going here, all right. But this was as amended for the earlier vote. City clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
No.
Alderman Sufferton?
No.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
All right, item number 24, Ordinance 128-0-18, passes the city council on a five to four vote.
Ordinance 130018, amending Section 726, moving vehicle parking and storage containers on public ways. This is for reserving loading and unloading of moving vehicles, I guess moving trucks, and storage containers without obstructing traffic flow from $100 to $120, beginning January 1, 2019. I move approval.
Seeing, Alderman Fleming?
I have a quick question. How long is the permit good for? Is it just eight hours, 24 hours?
I think it's a lifetime.
Good evening again, Dave Stonak, Public Works Agency Director. There's a limit of five days. It's to how long they need it, but no more than five days.
Okay, thank you.
Does this include dumpsters in the public way?
No.
No, but I mean, the five days, is that also for dumpsters in?
No, it is not.
Oh, okay.
All right, there was a motion that was seconded on item number 25. Could you take the roll, please, city clerk?
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
No.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Item number 26, Ordinance 134-0-18, passes the Evanston City Council on an eight to one vote.
All right, Ordinance 142018, amends Title 10, Motor Vehicle and Traffic, Chapter 11, Traffic Schedules, Section 17, Schedule 17, Parking Violation Penalties, A Variety of Charges Increased. Should I read them all, or could I just say, the information is attached? Want me to read it for the public? Yes?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Transportation and Parking Committee headed by Alderman Wynn recommends city council...
For only two more months.
Recommend city council adoption of Ordinance 142018. This amends the city code, various parking penalties, increasing the fine for a street sweeping violation by $35 to $75, with a $50 additional penalty if paid after the expiration of 21 days following issuance of a final determination of liability. A policy change regarding towing procedures will accompany this charge, this change to reduce the financial hardship and inconvenience that vehicle owners currently endure as part of sweeping operations. Staff also recommends increasing the fine for an expired parking meter by $5 to $25 effective January 1, 2019, as part of the 2019 budget proposal. I move adoption.
Seeing no discussion, city clerk, could you take the roll on item 27?
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
No.
Alderman Sufferton?
No.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
All right, item number 27, Ordinance 142-0-18, passes the Evanston City Council on a five to four vote.
Okay, Ordinance 145018, amending various sections of Title 10, Chapter 11, Chapter 12, Parking Meter Zones. It is recommended that various sections of these titles and chapters, adding Sunday enforcement from 1:00 PM to 9:00 PM, increasing the rate of all two-hour meters from $1 per hour to $1.50 per hour, all long-term meters from 25 cents per hour to 50 cents per hour, and all 20-minute meters from 25 cents to 50 cents beginning March 1, 2019, with an automatic increase to $2 per hour and 50 cents per hour, 50 cents per 15 minutes on January 1, 2020. The cost of replacement stickers and reprogramming the parking meters will be paid for through the parking fund. I move approval.
Alderman Fleming?
I have a question.[1691.04] city for the Sunday parking?
All parking meters. Citywide?
All parking meters. Thank you. It says parking meter zones, so, thank you. Sorry.
Okay. All right. Seeing no more discussion, City Clerk, could you take the role, please, on item 28?
Alderman Wen.
Aye, under duress.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
No.
Alderman Sufferton.
No.
Alderman Revelle.
No.
Alderman Revelle, I'm sorry, Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Nope.
Alderman Brithwaite.
Aye.
All right. Item number 28, ordinance 145-0-18, passes the Evanston City Council on a five to four vote.
Ordinance 143-018, amending schedule of license fees of city code, section 1083A, wheel tax. Our staff is requesting adoption of this ordinance, which will amend the license fees, increasing the annual license fee by $10. I think that's to $85?
Yes.
I move approval.
Seeing no discussion, City Clerk...
Oh, one thing, that the senior rate will still be in fourth. Half, it will be half the price.
Okay. Yes, okay. So, seeing no discussion, City Clerk, could you take the role on item 29?
Alderman Wen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
No.
Alderman Sufferton.
No.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Brithwaite.
All right. Item number 29, ordinance 143-0-18, passes the Evanston City Council on a six to three vote.
Ordinance 148-018, amending section 3252 in position of tax to increase the real estate transfer tax for transactions with a sale price over $1,500,000. It is recommended that the increase for real estate transfer tax for sales with a price of $1,501,001 for sale prices up to $1 million... No, that's wrong. Okay, all right. Up to $5 million is $7, and over $5,001,01 is $9, no matter how much. But remaining the same are all sales up to $1,500,000. That is, remains $5 per thousand. I move approval.
Seeing no discussion, City Clerk, could you take the role, please, on item number 30?
Alderman Wen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Brithwaite.
All right. Number 30, ordinance 148-0-18, passes the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote.
Ordinance 136-018, expediting planning and zoning review and building permits. Staff recommends we adopt this ordinance, which will alter the fee schedule. The proposal will create an application and fee schedule for expediting permit and plan review services. This is for action.
Seeing no discussion, City Clerk, could you take the role on item number 31?
Alderman Wen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Brithwaite.
Item number 31, ordinance 136-0-18, passes the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote.
Ordinance 135-018, amending section 324, hotel motel and vacation rental tax to add bed and breakfast establishments. I move approval.
Second.
Seeing no discussion, City Clerk, could you take the role on item number 32?
Alderman Wen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Brithwaite.
Item number 32, ordinance 135-0-18, passes the city council on a nine to zero vote.
I move approval of ordinance 137-018, which amends ordinance 50-013, to improve compliance with vacation rental licensing requirements. Staff proposes to increase vacation rental licensing fees to align with the cost of administering the program. For action.
All right, this can be a voice vote, you guys. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this passes the... Number 33, ordinance 137-0-18, passes the city council on a nine to zero vote.
Ordinance 141-018, amending rental registration of rental residential buildings to include inspection requirements and add accessory dwelling units. I'm going to read this because it's a little... This amends the rental registration process to include a fee of $200 for the initial inspection and registration of existing dwelling units, including accessory dwelling units, coach houses, and a fine from $75 to $375 for renting an unregistered unit following the amnesty period. These changes, including the fee structure, were approved unanimously by the city council on October 29, 2018. Move approval.
Seeing no discussion, City Clerk, could you take the role on item number 34?
Alderman Wen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman, sorry, Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Brithwaite.
Item number 34, ordinance 141-0-18, passes the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote.
Ordinance 133-018, amending section 3219, transportation network company tax. The ordinance adds the definition of shared rides, solo rides, and wheelchair-accessible rides, and increases the fee assessed for a solo ride from $0.20 to $0.45 per solo ride. Wheelchair-accessible rides are exempt from the fee, and the fee assessed for a shared ride remains at $0.20 per ride. This is for action.
Seeing no discussion, City Clerk, could you take the role on item number 35?
Alderman Wen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
No.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Brithwaite.
Item number 35, ordinance 133-0-18, passes the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote.
Ordinance 135-018, amending section 324, hotel motel and vacation rental tax to add bed and breakfast establishments. I move approval.
Second.
Seeing no discussion, City Clerk, could you take the role on item number 32?
Alderman Wen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Brithwaite.
Item number 32, ordinance 135-0-18, passes the city council on a nine to zero vote.
I move approval of ordinance 137-018, which amends ordinance 50-13, to improve compliance with vacation rental licensing requirements. Staff proposes to increase vacation rental licensing fees to align with the cost of administering the program. For action.
All right, this can be a voice vote, you guys. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this passes the... Number 33, ordinance 137-0-18, passes the city council on a nine to zero vote.
Ordinance 141-018, amending rental registration of rental residential buildings to include inspection requirements and add accessory dwelling units. I'm going to read this because it's a little... This amends the rental registration process to include a fee of $200 for the initial inspection and registration of existing dwelling units, including accessory dwelling units, coach houses, and a fine from $75 to $375 for renting an unregistered unit following the amnesty period. These changes, including the fee structure, were approved unanimously by the city council on October 29, 2018. Move approval.
Seeing no discussion, City Clerk, could you take the role on item number 34?
Alderman Wen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman, sorry, Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Brithwaite.
Item number 34, ordinance 141-0-18, passes the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote.
Ordinance 133-018, amending section 3219, transportation network company tax. The ordinance adds the definition of shared rides, solo rides, and wheelchair-accessible rides, and increases the fee assessed for a solo ride from $0.20 to $0.45 per solo ride. Wheelchair-accessible rides are exempt from the fee, and the fee assessed for a shared ride remains at $0.20 per ride. This is for action.
Seeing no discussion, City Clerk, could you take the role on item number 35?
Alderman Wen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
No.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Brithwaite.
Item number 35, ordinance 133-0-18, passes the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote. City manager, before number 36 is read, 36 will be the approval of the 2019 fiscal year budget. Is there any amendments or anything we need because of the budget balancing worksheet up here?
Yes, there are. Just one more. So, two numbers. So, on page 266 of the packet, the total expenditure number should now read $319,165,450. Correct.
Say that one more time. Okay.
And then, Ms. Lewis Laken, if you could help me, then on page 268, there should be then a new general fund number. And if you, can you just read that off?
Uh, 114, 143, 873. Oh, sorry. 114, 153, 37.
And so those are the only changes required.
That number, Kate, is what?
114, 153.
That is the, I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses.
I'm sorry, it's the general fund, Fund 100.
Okay.
And so those are the two changes.
Okay, ready?
Ready.
Resolution 101-R18, approving the 2019 fiscal year budget of the city of Evanston in the amount of $319,165, $319,165,450. I move approval.
All right. City Clerk, could you take the role, please, on item number 36?
Yes, yes. I apologize, Mr. Mayor, but I do have to note that I've had my light on the entire night to speak regarding the budget.
I understand. And just for the record, the policymakers up here are the Aldermen, and so I have chosen not to have you comment on the budget tonight.
Thank you. For the record. Alderman Wen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
No.
Alderman Sufferton.
No.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
No.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Brithwaite.
All right. Item number 36, resolution 101-R18, approving the 2019 fiscal year budget of the Evanston City, or of the city of Evanston, passes the city council on a six to three vote. Congratulations, everybody. You have a budget for 2019. A big thank you to the city staff for all of your hard work and long work, and a big thank you to everybody in the community that has come out and has been engaged in this budget. It's been going on for a long time. I don't think you'd find anybody that will say it's a perfect budget. There is sacrifice that's been made sort of across the board in terms of programs, as well as for our taxpayers, but I think it's good work that's been done, so congratulations. We're going to move to call the wards. First one up today is Alderman Wen.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson.
Have a great Thanksgiving, everybody. We've got much to be thankful in our community, and I'm grateful for the fact that we live in a community where we can have these conversations to one of our speakers. If I tried to talk about everything and every impact that our youth and young adult program or other employees for the city had, we'd be here for weeks. But those efforts are greatly appreciated. I voted yes on every item on the budget because I think it's important to reflect the collaborative nature of this process. While I didn't agree with every single thing that we did, and there were quite a few things I didn't agree with, I do think it's important to support my colleagues in coming up with the final product that reflects that collaboration.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Happy Thanksgiving to everyone in Evanston. Enjoy your families. Peace and love.
Thank you. Alderman Sufferton.
Lock up your stuff. It's trespass the vehicles season in the sixth ward, and they're mostly unlocked cars, so if everyone could please be mindful of that. Lock your cars, check them. We had our van rifled through. They're not break-ins. They're people just pulling on car doors that are unsecured. Lock them up, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Revelle.
I think, as many of you know, on Thursday last week, the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District Commissioners voted five to four to grant the request for a roadway easement across the 10th hole of the Canal Shores Golf Course, which is actually located in Womat. They did this despite an outpouring of emails and public comment protesting this granting of a public benefit to a private landowner, property owner. The four commissioners who voted no on the easement, President Sporopoulos, Commissioner Avila, Commissioner Morita, who came back from maternity leave, and then Commissioner Deborah Shore, who was, made a really eloquent statement explaining why she was going to vote no, and I would have[1645.08]